You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Work Session for March 9, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting officially to order and establish a quorum. I think here on the DS we have Board Member Parker, Board Member Bohannon, myself, Board Member Kaplan, Board Member Crowley, and Board Member Carter Jones. I think Board Member Bremer is online virtually. I do know that Board Member Mott Singer will come on a little later. Board Member Calvert-Hayes will not be here tonight, and just for the record, I will leave in about 30 minutes to go and talk to some young people in our community, but definitely be back by the end of the meeting. So we do have a quorum established. Next, we need to approve our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
If there are no question or discussion about the agenda, if we can let it be known by aye with consensus?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we will go to the work sessions, and I will turn it over to Board Member Parker to lead with curriculum.
All right. Thank you. Our first discussion item is North Carolina DPI Advanced Teacher Roles Grant, Ashley Williams. And I think that Ashley is with us remotely. Is that correct, Ashley?
Yes. Hi there.
Great. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Good. Good evening. Good evening Superintendent McManus and Chairwoman Woodbury and esteemed Board Members. Good to see you guys again in the flesh.
Yes.
And I am excited to bring you an update about our Advanced Teaching Roles Grant in partnership with Public Impact. This has been four years in the making. I think Chairwoman Woodbury also met with Best NC to talk about how our district could become an Opportunity Culture District, and she presented some information to us about two years ago. And so this past year, we were accepted as an Opportunity Culture School District.
And Dr. Roseburg, I will also say that Board Member Kaplan was in that meeting too and helped to bring back the information. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Kaplan, as well, for bringing that information back to the district. So we have some exciting news to share. And to provide you with the update, we also have two of our Phenomenal Inspire 340 Principals with us this evening. Principal Angela Chaplin of Abraham Elementary and Principal Diamond Cotton of Kimberly Park Elementary. So many of you may or may not know that Opportunity Culture strives to provide all students with an excellent teacher. So our goal is to reach more students, to pay teachers more, use our regular budgets to do so, and then to provide all teachers with the allotted time that they need to adequately plan for collaboration and development of their lessons alongside the instructional leadership team at each school. It also matches the authority and accountability with the teacher leader role. So some may ask, how is this different from our Teacher Academy that we currently have in the district? We see this as a nice complement to Teacher Academy. Teacher Academy is the entry point into teacher leadership, and Opportunity Culture is the career pathway to teacher leadership. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we have done so far with our Advanced Teaching Roles Grant. We have identified three positions for Opportunity Culture in our district. First is the multi-classroom teacher leader role, where these are teachers who have a track record of being highly effective with students, and so they have high growth and high proficiency rates among the students that they serve. And they also serve on small teaching teams, almost like a grade chair, but with more responsibilities and accountability. Expanded impact teachers, these are teachers who have more students than what we would normally identify as a normal class size, so they are expanding their reach. And some of them have expertise in core content areas such as mathematics, or language arts, or science. And then we have our new role for our classified employees called the Reach Associate. And these are paraprofessionals that we feel like also have a proven record of effectiveness with supporting teachers in the classroom, so they may be more experienced teacher assistants, and they too qualify for this Opportunity Culture pathway. So I'm going to allow Ashley to talk a little bit about the research that supports the need for multi-classroom leaders and the impact that they have on instruction, especially as it relates to Title I schools across the nation. So Ashley, would you talk about this slide a little bit?
Definitely. Good afternoon, everyone. So this slide right here just represents an independent third-party study that was conducted a few years ago using Opportunity Culture School Districts. And so what we found is that teachers who start off without an MCL, they often started at the 50th percentile in reading and math. After being placed on an MCL team, we saw these teachers grow to the 66 through 72nd percentile in reading, and to the 75th to 85th percentile in math. And this was a study conducted with 15,000 students, 300 teachers, three school districts over two to three years, and 74% of those schools were Title I.
So this is just a reminder to those that are listening, our multi-classroom leaders are identified by their effectiveness data. These are high-performing teachers that we are recruiting to be a part of the Opportunity Culture, and Inspire 340 is just the entry point for the rest of the district, because we consider ourselves as a learning lab. And so it's starting out with the 14 schools that I currently serve in the Inspire 340 network. So we will be measuring the impact of these roles coming up during the 21, 22 school year, because this year has been our design year and our planning for implementation. We do have some schools that have already implemented, and we also have Cook Literacy Model who started implementation in 2018. So we will be looking at our interim assessments and looking and setting targets for student achievement and growth, specifically looking at proficiency rates, because it has been a trend for our district that Inspire 340 schools tend to grow students. It's the increase in proficiency that we are now looking for. And so we too are on that quest. And so we want the growth data that we've been getting out of these schools to also match the proficiency rates while increasing our literacy rates above 40% in this particular group of schools. So we also are going to be looking at the percent of low growth, meeting growth, and exceeding growth using comparison data between the schools that have the MCL roles versus those schools that do not. So we'll be using 21, 22 data to help support this. And this is due to the pandemic. It just gives us a nice gap year to kind of work with. So Public Impact has helped the district to streamline what our career ladder pathways will be for these roles. Right now, we have a lot of MCL I roles paid at $12,000. Many of our schools are able to pay this stipend using their Title I budgets. But the goal of Public Impact is to have districts use their existing budgets. So we might use an existing allotment. We have a history of not always filling our vacancies as we should, but we can pay teachers more to reach more students that are highly effective versus having a lot of inexperienced teachers in these schools. And so right now, many of our schools are paying the $12,000 stipend. And then we have the Expanded Impact I currently in a role at $8,000. But the more students that these roles reach, the higher the stipend. So that's why you see the $14,000 at the top of the ladder, because the MCL II may have more teachers that they need to work with. And an Expanded Impact Teacher II might have to increase the number of students that they are reaching out to. They might be floating from class to class to provide that high-quality math, or science, or reading instruction. And then we have our Reach Associate, which is our classified employee that will provide the coverage to these teachers as they teach those core content areas. And so our Reach Associates are also involved in the planning piece with the MCLs and the EIT. So how do we compare to the districts next to us or down the road from us that are also launching Opportunity Culture? Lexington City Schools has also launched Opportunity Culture, but we thought it would be nice to have a comparison to the district to the east, right next door, and how we stack up against them with our bonus structure. So since we started with $12,000, we wanted to have some continuity there. But as you can see, Guilford has MCLs I, II, and III, and our MCL I role is very competitive with their MCL I role. They're offering $10,000, we're offering $12,000. And they don't even have Reach Associates, and we are able to now recruit back some of our classified folks that we lost at Guilford through this Opportunity Culture pathway. So we have had some of them to reach out, asking more questions about that particular role, and recruiting them back. And then they also have three levels of Expanded Impact teachers. So who are our new Inspire 340 schools? These are our new Inspire 340 schools. And just to a reminder to you all and to the community at large, we have identified Inspire 340 schools as any school with a proficiency rate in literacy below 40%, and that was identified not only at the district level, but the greater Winston-Salem community also identified them as schools in need of critical help and support. So we have implementing schools as Ashley Academy, Cook, Dix Latham, Easton, Kimberly Park, North Hills, Petrie, and Prince Abraham. And new to design this year, and I think my slide, thank you, for OC is Bolton, Forest Park, Hallwood, Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy at the middle school level, and Gibson Elementary. So design means that these schools are currently planning on implementing for the upcoming school year, and Public Impact does a really good job of helping the schools with their design efforts, as well as coaching them through the allotment process to demonstrate for them what is possible. And currently, our window for recruitment of MCLs is open from March 5 to the 26. Our marketing department has done a really good job of marketing Opportunity Culture for Winston-Salem Forsyth County. And if you will go to our new webpage, you will see all things about Opportunity Culture and what Inspire 340 is all about, because we are about action-oriented strategies that will lead to systemic change in the district, and we are looking for sustainable solutions. As you know, we have been depended upon a lot with grants, and we're trying to move away from having a lot of grants, but really build an infrastructure to support our school turnaround efforts in the district. On March 12, we'll show our promotional video, which you will see at the end of this presentation. And we will hold interviews in April and May coming up. And that particular interview process is made up of not only Inspire 340 staff, but instructional services members as well. We have a district design team in place that is made up of the Human Resources Department, the Finance Department, Instructional Services, the Teacher Effectiveness Office, and then the School Turnaround Office of Inspire 340. So we have everyone together, and we are excited about that, because we believe that that will help us have a stronger start in the initiative and laying the firm foundation that we need to move forward with this endeavor. So at this time, I'm going to let you hear some voices from the field, and I'm going to stop talking. And I think Kevin has a copy of our video that we would like to share with you at this time.
Opportunity Culture, I think, is really just a way of doing business and thinking about how do we grow an infrastructure for teacher leadership. So often, we see teaching as a stagnant career ladder, where you work in a classroom for 30 years, and then what's next? So Opportunity Culture gives that in-between, if you will.
So Opportunity Culture is a district-wide implementation that is allowing teachers to not only teach, but coach other teachers.
But you get to impact change at a greater level beyond your classroom. So it's not just what's great in your classroom. You get to spread those great practices to support other classrooms and more students.
Let's get it.
Let's go.
Let's get it.
Let's go.
All right. Your eyes are checking the screen.
These strong teachers that work with other teachers help them by planning, modeling, coaching, co-teaching, and more. The goal is to help students to make sure that they're successful.
Do we see any of those signal words, like first, second, third?
I feel like Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools needs this initiative, because we have a lot of amazing teachers across the district, and these teachers want to continue to help students without leaving the classroom. So this gives us the best of both worlds.
It also gives those teachers some ways to grow. So it kind of has an innovative career ladder, so they have some ways to grow professionally and remain in the classroom.
It's often hard to recruit and retain excellent, outstanding teachers in the Inspire 340 network. So Opportunity of Culture allows us to offer some benefits to our excellent teachers, extended pay that allows them to grow in their leadership skills as well.
So what does the word valuable mean?
We've needed to keep that pipeline of great teachers going. And so Opportunity Culture, we are now seeing the benefits of gaining all these teacher leaders. So we started our implementation in 2018, and so it takes a while to grow that pipeline and that consistency. But now, we get to see the benefits of how many more students get access to really phenomenal teachers.
Our commitment is to serve our community with the best education led by the best educators and utilizing the Opportunity Culture model. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools have sought out highly qualified teachers with proven results, and these teachers take on leadership roles to support their team and school.
Jordan, what if I do you second beat? How many do you have?
So one benefit for our Opportunity Culture teacher is a $12,000 stipend. But with that comes, you grow and enclose gaps of other teachers and students. So in schools where it's low performing, the biggest thing we have to do is get these students proficient. So when we are in the classrooms, we're teaching our students, and we're helping teachers teach their students, which in turn will help Inspire 340 schools get proficiency and growth out of students.
The fractional name for those classes, what?
Third.
After doing my research, I could tell that it's something that would be very beneficial for our teachers. We know that our teachers need constant support, but we need the right kind of support. And we need support from educators that know what they're doing. And so MCLs enable us to do that on a consistent basis with teachers that have documented success with students in populations like ours.
The titles that I've held in the past have helped prepare me for this. So for example, I've worked a lot with field-experienced students who are still in college. So working with a teacher at that level helps me model without assumptions. I can help new teachers build the routine procedures and classroom management in their rooms. I've been the grade-level chair, so I've learned how to lead a group of teachers that require trust and respect.
Opportunity of Culture leaders, the experience they have in their classrooms, typically their grade chairs, perhaps they've served on school improvement teams, but doing this allows them to grow in their leadership.
Can you see what letter we changed? R. Ooh, good, Emily.
At North Hills, we've always had a large number of novice teachers. And with novice teachers, you want to provide them a lot of support, but there's only so much that your small leadership team can do. So we've always relied on teacher leaders to be able to provide that support, and we believe in that there are many hands make light work.
So we always know teacher leadership is important, but if you don't have a strategic way to approach it, what happens is you don't have a clear model, you don't have a clear accountability structure. And so Opportunity Culture has given us both a professional development and a career ladder to help us ensure that we're recognizing teacher talent and having levels, right, for teachers to be able to support our building and to support our students.
All right. And I also just want to highlight that Angela Adams, Ms. Gaines, and Lauren Parmley were all Teacher Academy teachers now serving in Opportunity Culture, as well as they came up in the ranks. They did their field experiences with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. They were student teachers. They became third-grade teachers, many of them. I think Angela's the early grades teacher with some phenomenal data in reading. And they are now leading in our schools, and we do use them as some of our go-to people for advice and best practices. So do you have any questions for us?
Ms. Kaplan?
Well, kind of just a comment that I'm so impressed with Opportunity Culture. And I just find it, you know, just astounding that the data in 2017, 2018 showed that 27% of the non-Opportunity Culture Schools in North Carolina exceeded student growth, whereas 53% of the Opportunity Culture Schools exceeded growth. So that's pretty impressive, I think. So I'm very excited about it. And just wanted to reiterate, so the design teams teach us how to reallocate the school budget to help fund, pay the supplements to the teachers out of our... So they just, they do all of that.
That's part of our grant that we have with DPI. They provided the resources for us to partner with Public Impact. Ashley, do you want to speak a little bit more about how you all support us and with our design work?
Definitely. So we have three school design sessions where the principal and at least three to six members of their team attend as a school design team. And then we also have coaching calls in between those design sessions. What our team does, we look at the current staffing of the school, and then we think about opportunities. So if we see any current vacancies or anticipated vacancies, or any roles that can be repurposed, what we do is we propose some staffing plans to principals and their teams to show them how they can work with their existing funds, or how they can be really creative with their scheduling, to have multi-classroom leaders, EITs, and RAs to support their students.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. I just have, it's kind of, maybe it's like a follow-up with that, but I agree with Board Member Kaplan, and I know that this was something that we were excited that we finally see it rolling out in the district. What are we anticipating for, I guess, the start of, you know, we know that Cook has been using this, but with some of the others, are we trying to do this at each grade level? How many, you know, teachers are we trying to bring in at a time to do this model?
So ultimately, you know, we would love to see a MCL role at each grade level, but it's up to each individual school and what's best for their schools. So I think Principal Chaplin and Mrs. Cotton can talk to you a little bit about their school design efforts. Each one of them have unique school design plans based upon their needs. So currently, Principal Chaplin, how many do you anticipate for the next school year? You currently have...
I have three MCLs and three RA, and I hope to have four MCLs. And Ashley and her team are going to help me with the design. It depends on the funding, but my goal would be to have at least two at the grade levels, or maybe two. I think the smaller the team, the more successful, you read the research, I mean, the more we have to share. So that would be my goal. Right now, I have one MCL for each grade level, and then I have mine.
Do we, I just, I guess I realize that the design should definitely be specific to the school and their particular needs, but I also don't want funding challenges, something that could be dealt with at the district level to impede this happening. So I'm not sure what that looks like from the district standpoint, but, you know, I would think that we, I mean, it's proven that it works, but so I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, here at the district level, we can try to help with some of that. And then, you know, we have, we have schools that are not Title I schools that also have the need for this, and I don't know how in the world they would do that if, you know, so if we have some that are using Title I money, what happens when you don't have that money to use? So I'm just concerned, you know, there's a lot of things...
But they're also using existing...
And they're using, but a lot of things, we get started, and then we find that funding has not been allocated or thought about. So I just want to make sure that we're doing that, is they're putting the designs together and not leaving it for the principals to try to figure out that they've got enough going on.
We appreciate that. We do. I think Mrs. McManus want to talk a little bit about the non-Title I schools and the vision for this.
Yes. So what our discussion has been is that we want to use the, this almost as a pilot, see the results that happen as a result of the implementation this year and the next year's group that's going to be added on. And eventually, our goal would be to have this as a model for our system, for the entire system. And with that, it would mean identifying funding source that is a regular funding source for our system and not being reliant on grants.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Roseburg? Do you have one, Ms. Bohannon?
Yes. Dr. Roseburg, so could you, in a school that doesn't have this model, what is the normal, I guess, structure? So there's just, it's just a teacher, and you may have like a lead teacher, and then an AP? Like, what does it look like in a normal?
Most schools have a principal, an assistant principal, and an instructional facilitator. And the difference between the MCL and instructional facilitator is that the instructional facilitator has to expand their reach across the whole school, and they have additional responsibilities, and they don't work directly with students. Whereas with the MCLs, they are held accountable for student achievement and grade-level growth, because they are still connected to the students.
And what role does the MCL play in the evaluation of the teachers that they supervise? Or is it, it's not, can you talk about that a little bit?
They do have an evaluation instrument. At the state level, we have a teacher leadership evaluation instrument. And then there's also evaluation tools that Public Impact provides the district with for us to measure their effectiveness with leading adults, working well with instructional leadership teams, and then also producing outcomes.
Thank you.
And they also receive ongoing training and support. And this summer, all of our MCLs from across the nation will engage together through their professional learning and experiences, which I think is going to be vital for our group. But they do get ongoing support and check-ins from our school improvement director, Diana McIntosh. She works very closely with them, supporting them, listening to their concerns. And then we, as a leadership team for Inspire 340, because I consider this group of principals to be an extension of myself, because they are phenomenal, we come together with Ashley's team to problem-solve some of those concerns and some of those hurdles.
Mr., can I jump in, Dr. Roseburg? That's about their evaluation. I think also you were asking, correct me if I'm wrong, about their work with teachers. They do not evaluate teachers. They are in a coaching and support role of their colleagues. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
That was part, but I'm glad you mentioned their evaluation too, Dr. Roseburg. Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yeah, you can.
Any other questions? I just have one, Dr. Roseburg. And this was early on in the presentation. Did you say that a lot of the teachers were members of Teacher Academy, and then they evolve into this role as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, did you say that?
Yes. They complement each other very nicely, and we are just so fortunate to have the Teacher Academy, because it gave us something to kind of pull from as a starting point. And Ms. Cannon and I worked together in identifying some folks that we wanted to invite to the initial informational session, and that's how we got the current group that we have in place with our high-performing principals that we moved. We were able to look at those names and see if they were interested. And many of them knew a little bit about Opportunity Culture, so that helped as well.
I'm just happy to see a...
I'm just happy to see an additional way to get more compensation to our teachers. And especially if they're, if they're getting proven results, it's almost like a merit system without it actually being a merit system. I mean, we've been trying to, we, you know, we struggle with how do we pay them as the college-educated professionals that they are? And this is, this could be a pathway to help improve that.
Yeah, it's definitely a game changer, and it helps to boost morale, not just within those teachers, but the teachers that they're leading.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ashley, for joining us as well, thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see everyone.
Good to see you in person. Next, we have first semester EOC and BOG III data update, Andy Kraft.
Thank you, Board Member Parker, Superintendent McManus, members of the board. You all are accustomed to me bringing these results to you in the fall. This past week, the State Board of Education took the unusual steps to release first semester data. And so that's what we're doing here, is we're mirroring the report that the State Board of Education heard, and we want to make sure that you have those results for Winston-Salem. We want you to understand our results on the EOCs, which are administered at the end of first semester, as well as the BOG III, which is typically administered at the beginning of the school year. But this year, it was administered halfway through the school year. And I'm going to compare the results for Winston-Salem to the results for the Piedmont Triad and the results for the state of North Carolina overall. Let me offer a couple of disclaimers, and one is, these results continue to change. This test window is not closed. So the results I share with you today are not the final results. These results, the test window is unusual this year in that makeups can be taken all the way through the end of the school year. So these are very much preliminary results. Okay, the good news is this, large numbers of students came in to take tests, okay? In fact, we were surprised by the large number of students that came in to take our tests. And if you'll remember, school was not in person at this time for high school students. They had not returned to in-person instruction in mid-January during the test window. And yet you see here that our participation in these tests was higher than our region's participation and higher than state participation. You see that eighty-nine percent of our students came in to take the test. That's lower than a typical year, and yet we were excited to see that it was so high and higher than it was across the state. And you can see how that breaks down by the particular grades. By the way, there are four EOCs administered at the high school level, one in biology, English II, Math I, and Math III. You can see that our lowest participation was in Math I, while our highest participation was in biology. Nonetheless, this is high participation across the board. That participation is slightly different by the various racial subgroups, as well as we look at AIG students, English learners, and students with disability. But what I've presented to you here is a comparison of our district to these subgroups across the state. And you see that our district had higher participation rates in every subgroup compared to the state. But you can also see that we had lower participation of some subgroups. For example, our English learners had low participation, our students with disabilities had lower participation. And yet they were still over eighty percent, and they still outpaced the rest of the state of North Carolina. So this slide's a little busy, but don't worry, we're going to go through each of these subjects individually. But what this shows really is a comparison of the nineteen-twenty school year, first semester, to the twenty-twenty-one school year, first semester. And what you'll notice right off the bat is that there is a drop in proficiency in every subject across the board, both here in Winston-Salem, as well as in our region, as well as in the state of North Carolina. So again, I recognize this slide's busy, but let's go ahead and take a look at every one of these four tests. We'll start with English II, okay? And if you compare the nineteen-twenty school year to the twenty-twenty-one school year, let's look just at those first two columns of not proficient. Typically, we'll talk about the number of students that are proficient, but let's just begin with those two columns on the left-hand side. And what you'll see is that English II is actually unusual compared to all four tests. English II had the smallest drop of any tests across the state. Biology, Math I, and Math III had much larger drops. And so you see here that, you see an increase. That's an increase in the percentage of students that were not proficient. Obviously, that's a bad thing, right? So for our district, we increased from thirty-six percent of our students not proficient in the nineteen-twenty school year to thirty-nine percent of our students not proficient. That's a small change, which is a good thing in a year like we're having here with this pandemic, okay? We, this could have been much worse, and we're glad that it wasn't. But you see that we had a small increase in the percentage of our students that were not proficient on English II. The state of North Carolina, these are the results when you break down the results by race. And what I'm going to do is lay this next to our results when you break down our results by race. And you see here for the state of North Carolina, there were some slight changes. In fact, some even went up. But again, this was the smallest amount of change that we saw in any of the EOCs was English II. You know that in our district, the three largest subgroups are African-American subgroup, our Hispanic subgroup, and our white subgroup. And what you'll notice here is that our African-American and our Hispanic subgroup had essentially no change, very small change, in the percentage of students that were not proficient. That's a good thing, and it could have been much worse in a year like we're having now. And yet our white subgroup saw an increase in the percentage of students that were not proficient. That's not a good thing, and we have to address that before the end of the year. Let's move on to the next test, Math I. Talking to Velvet Simington, and Velvet, you know, emphasizes these results don't reflect teachers taking a year off or support staff, they are working harder than ever, right? So I just want to make sure I emphasize that, that through the lens of looking at these disappointing results we got at the end of first semester, we know that our teachers are working really hard, and they're disappointed in trying to decide what to do next. But you see what we have here for our district, you see a sharp increase. That's a sharp increase. So we had sixty-six percent of our students were not proficient at the end of first semester nineteen-twenty. And that increased dramatically, up to eighty-four percent of our students that took this test were not proficient. That's not a good outcome, and we're working hard to figure out how to address this issue. And you can see similar drops across the state in terms of proficiency. But we're certainly going to work hard to address this large change in the percentage of students that were not proficient. And then that test performance differs by subgroup. This is what it looks like for the state of North Carolina. You also see a large drop for every subgroup in Math I across the state of North Carolina. And I know what you're most interested in, and that is, how did we do here in Winston-Salem? Again, our three largest subgroups, African-American, Hispanic, and white students. You'll notice that our African-American students stayed about the same, our Hispanic students stayed about the same, and our white students had a large change in the percentage of students that are not proficient. Math III, again, these are all changing. We are bringing in more Math III tests as people are continuing, students are continuing to come in and make up their assessments. But you see that we saw a drop here of about ten percentage points between the nineteen-twenty school year and the twenty-twenty-one school year. The rest of the state saw about a ten percentage point drop there as well. So our results do mirror the rest of the state. When you look at it by subgroup, and you see the state of North Carolina reported here, for most subgroups, they saw about a ten percent drop in their proficiency rates. White students at the state level had a more significant drop than Hispanic and African-American students. If you look here at just the district, you see that for African-American students, that's a, that's a significant increase in the percentage of students that are not proficient, from sixty-five to seventy-nine percent. For Hispanic students, we also see a large increase from sixty-four to seventy-five percent. And finally, for our white students, you see not as large an increase, and yet an unacceptable increase, about eleven-point increase in the percentage of students that are not proficient. Finally, biology, you see that there was also a significant increase in the number of students that were not proficient in biology when you compare first semester nineteen-twenty to first semester of twenty-twenty-one. And that change, as you see here in the state of North Carolina, is reflected, just like we see here in the district, we see a similar increase in the percentage of students not proficient across the state of North Carolina. And then we'll zoom into Winston-Salem, and you see for African-American students, we saw a large increase, fifty-three percent to seventy-two. See, that same large increase for our Hispanic students. And for white students, we also see a significant increase in the percentage of students that are not proficient on the biology and, of course, test at the end of first semester. So those are your EOCs, the four high school EOCs, which were administered mainly in January, but are continuing to be made up. And then this other assessment, BOG III, you'll remember BOG III is typically given at the beginning of the school year. This year, it was given January, February. So should we be comparing results year over year? Well, I'm going to show you those results now, but I want you to understand there's typically two different test windows, right, that we're really comparing here, okay? So here, we also saw a large rate of participation. That's a positive thing. We expected almost four thousand students, and we saw about thirty-two hundred students take the test. So remember, all of these tests have to be administered in person. So what this means is all these students decided to come into school and take these assessments. So eighty-two percent participation rate was, was good, and we were happy with that. And you see that we outpace the state in every racial subgroup, as well as the other subgroups that we report. And we had higher participation rate across the board. So we can, we can be encouraged by that, that our students feel comfortable to come in, take this test, so we can get some important information on how they're doing. So how are they doing? Well, we do see a drop in our proficiency rates. So what we've reported here are, you remember that scoring a three, four, or five on the BOG is determined to be proficient. And so if you look at levels one and two, you'll notice an increase in the level, the number of Level I students, the percentage of students that scored a Level I. And then I would direct your eye to the right-hand side, the Level V. You see a decrease in the percentage of students that scored a Level V, okay? And we certainly would like to see that trend the other way around. We'd like to see an increase in the percentage of students scoring Level V and a decrease in the level of students scoring a Level I. But remember, this is just the beginning of your assessment. This is not really used in accountability. So this is not used to calculate any type of school performance grade. It's a beginning-of-year measure. So we still have an opportunity to turn these scores around when we administer that EOG at the end of the year. And as you can see here, the scores were not the same for every racial subgroup across the state. You see those scores reported here. And you'll note that the similar change that occurred for the various racial subgroups across the state reflected the drops that we saw for the racial subgroups that we report here in Winston-Salem. So that's all the data I have for you, and I know your next obvious question is, so what are we going to do about this, right? And you've probably seen the agenda items. Dr. Pratt is here to talk a little bit about that, Cheryl Wright, to talk about some of these extended learning plans to address these learning losses that are reported here. And know that our teachers are working really hard. I know you all know that, but I want to make sure folks at home realize we're seeing these results, we're disappointed in these results, and we're developing a plan to respond to these results. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kraft?
I have one, one thing that I noticed, and that was the English II and Math I numbers for academically gifted, not proficient. That was-
It was a stark change, wasn't it?
How do you explain that? To go from one point five percent to twenty-five percent?
That's a dramatic change, isn't it?
Yeah, it was-
Yeah.
There were a couple of those, the ones, the academically gifted, which really had a higher jump than any of the others. Do we have any?
It's completely unprecedented, right? So academically gifted subgroup is typically greater than ninety-five percent proficient in every measure, right? Now, if you're taking Math I in high school, it's a little unusual to have an AIG student taking Math I in high school, right? But it happens typically, our AIG students take Math I in middle school, right? So they won't take that EOC until the end of the year. So, you know, for whatever reason, some AIG students do take it in high school. So maybe you'd say to yourself, well, I wonder if those students would be less likely to be proficient, but that's never been the case in years past, right? And so why, and I'm glad you pointed that out, it's a detail, right, that people could overlook. But, yeah, maybe it just shows the impact that we're seeing from COVID, and it's really a challenge for us.
Do you have a question, Mr. Bahan?
Yeah, so I did want to ask, so I know you said that the numbers are still changing, but you don't expect them to change dramatically, right?
It's a good question. So from now until the end of the year, we'll see small numbers of students make up their first semester assessments. At the end of the year, remember, we've only tested about half of the students at this point, right? So those students that are taking these courses in second semester, when they take their tests at the end of the year, we could see a dramatic change at the end of the year, right? Because we're going to get about twice the number of test scores that we've collected thus far. So it's quite possible these scores could change, yes, sir.
And if you find out any answers to questions like the math issues, or the AIG issues, or whatever you all, I mean, if, I mean,
Absolutely.
Will you delve into that a little?
I will.
Little more to try to find out if you see any trends or any?
Sure, I'll be glad to, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because I mean, that's-
That's, yeah, it's unprecedented, and it's dramatic, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those kind of scream at you when you look at those, those results.
Right, they do.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what you could-
Sure, yeah, we can dig deeper and ask the teachers kind of what they saw along the way in first semester, thank you.
One additional question I had is, I was interested to see in the areas where there were not changes in, for the Black and Hispanic subgroups, but there were changes for the white subgroup. If you could, I know that that's, it's hard to answer the question of why, but that, to me, seemed interesting as well.
It was unusual, yeah, and those are tough questions to answer in terms of why. I suppose that other variables that we could cross with that would be participation and attendance at this point. And we've looked at Canvas participation in the first semester. So did we see different rates of students engaging in their classes online across the racial subgroups? That might help to explain it a little bit.
Right.
Ms. Mott Sanger has a question.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mott Sanger.
This is actually more a comment than a question. And it's, while we are seeing that scores are not the same as they've been in other years, I think it's extraordinary that the loss was not greater, given how unprecedented, how challenging, how difficult this was for so many people, that I have to say to our staff and to our teachers, you have done an amazing job in an impossible situation. And our kids are going to need a lot of love, a lot of care, a lot of support as they are able to return back to school in a way that is familiar. But it's important to remember that for many students, a great deal of learning still took place this year. And I just have to give a big shout-out to all the people who've worked so hard, that this could have been so much worse. And I have to thank people for what they have done.
Thank you, Ms. Mott Sanger, that's very true. I think, I think it'll be interesting to see what, what comes out of any, anything that you find.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think while we're exchanging, Ms. Grant's going to come up and address something about math, the math results. She's going to walk up real quick as Dr. Pratt's walking up.
Okay, Ms. Grant.
Good evening, everyone, I don't know if you can hear me from this here. Okay, one of the things that we noticed, good evening, everybody. One of the things that we noticed with math is, as we closed school in March, and we were not doing the live instruction, we had to make a lot of choices about what curriculum we were able to focus on and compact. And we know that there were certain content and certain standards we could not get to in the spring. And so that compounded, when the students came back, they didn't have all of the foundational skills that they needed for math. And math is such a concept that you have to practice and use and apply. You don't remember all of those algebraic formulas all the time if you're not using them. So our math team is really focused on how do we compact and make up for those standards that we had to miss in the spring and give the students the skills that they need. So that was a combination, and that is something that, as Andy mentioned, is happening across the state, but also across the country. They're seeing that the math scores are dramatically lower than ELA scores.
Thank you, that makes total sense, thank you. All right, Dr. Pratt, you are going to talk about the extended learning opportunities for spring.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, good evening, I'm School Board Member Superintendent McManus. Based on our formal and informal data, schools were asked to develop an action plan to support students until the end of the school year. Schools created an extended learning plan that would give students opportunity to improve their academic performance. The extended learning plans will provide for students to receive additional support beyond the regular school day. Each school identifies students who needed additional support with their learning outcomes. Schools developed a plan to offer academic support before, during, and after school. Tonight, we have three schools here that will share their extended learning plans with the board. First, we'll start off with Dr. Sheila Barnett, who's principal of Con Oak Elementary.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent McManus, thank you for having us here tonight. I am here as but one representative of a hard-working team of elementary principals. And so I'm just going to represent our process that we have utilized and that most, many of us have utilized to prepare this opportunity for our students. And we are first thankful that our district has the foresight to give us open opportunity to create these extended learning plans. In the past, we've had a certain amount of funds for adverse students identified by our results. And so just to have the opportunity to say, whatever you need for your group of students, it is now time for you to plan and go for the biggest plan you can. And so at Con Oak Elementary School, we kind of considered that an extended school day for our students. The process that we utilized is that we went over our data for IREs- The process that we utilized is that we went over our data for I-Ready, our reading data and our math, and we looked at our students and change from last year to this year, students and change from beginning of the year to the middle of the year, and then what other resources were available for our students. And in doing so, we had some major concerns, much like you just saw in the data that was presented. And so, what we identified were who were our main students of concern, our highest-risk numbers. And that was approximately 173 students that are two or grade levels, two or more grade levels below their requirements. That's out of 628 students as of that time. Then, we also identified 199 students who were one grade level below, and we felt like we didn't have the opportunity to choose between two groups. Both of those groups of students needed to be served so that they don't continue to widen the gap throughout the year. You take those 372 students that were at risk, and then you add those 84 that we just haven't had consistent participation in in our school for the year because remote has not worked for them for some reason or another. And that gave us a big number of 456. So, therefore, we call it an extended school year because we need to reach the masses with our plan. And so, again, extended learning plan allows us to do that. With those decisions, we then tiered our need for support. And so, we realized we've got to use not just extended learning plan opportunity, but we also needed to use our during instructional day to maximize the reaching of the students. And then, we couldn't only look at intervention opportunity, but we also have to look at enrichment opportunity. And so, we've created a three-tier program that we are providing based on this opportunity. And it includes Tier One, that everybody gets an opportunity, quality instruction, and we're going to focus on some change in instructional practices to address the fact that we're compacting instruction, as you just heard, as well as that we're having to reach students in a very unique way, whether it's because they're remote or just because they have been out of schooling for a period of time and we're re-schooling, retooling. And so, we're doing some things within the instructional day as well as in our small group instruction to meet everyone's needs. That's our Tier One. Then, beyond that, we needed a Tier Two that said, what about those students that are one year below grade level expectations that need to close in some of those gaps? And so, we're adding the focus on small group instruction with some professional development from ERG on guided reading and guided math. Successful implementation at the student's level of need. But we needed more. So, beyond that, we created our Tier Three, and that is our after-school program that will be open to those 456 students, if their parents so choose, for them to participate in an after-school additional hour focused on reading and math intervention with two key resources, I-Ready, which has already been research-based proven. We have the data, we have the domains. It provides instructional support for teachers, activities to do, and everything's right at hand. So, we have to consider the load on our teachers, and that helps to support them in doing that intervention work as well as our Wonders material and the fact that it has Tier Two and Tier Three support materials as well as ELL support. And some of us have schools more highly impacted by language needs for students. But we always say, any student that's not at home talking about academic language is a language-needs student. And so, we can serve all of our students with that. We are fortunate at Con Oak that we surveyed our staff. And based on research that we had had with our joint principals meeting and some articles and some studies, we found that there are three essential components that we needed to include in tutoring to make some changes. And those included making sure that we had relationships with students, teachers who knew what their gap areas were, and effective implementation of a curriculum that matched what their needs were. The other component of that is small group, individually preferred, but larger if necessary. And so, we wanted to keep it as small as around three or four students, and we put that out to our staff members. Believe it or not, we had 48 staff members out of about 80 who have volunteered already to be a part of this after-school tutoring. So, what does that mean? At our school, students will be with their teachers, getting their tutoring. And so, we are extending that opportunity, that relationship, and people who already know where the needs are and can address those with students in an effective manner. That's a large change for us because usually we have to recruit teachers. And we've always had good participation, but we have, Ms. Kaplan has to get to know all the students in the class before she can start to work with them. So, now, those teachers already have that knowledge of relationship. That is the model that we have put in place for our extended-day program. It will run from March 15th to May 20th, which gives us 24 effective one-hour sessions that the teachers can utilize to make a difference in the lives of our students, to help them attain at least one year's growth, if not two, and then also to give them the opportunity to reach proficiency. And the last component of that is we're going to measure our work to know if this is an effective model for us using our MOY I-Ready data as opposed to our end-of-year I-Ready data, because that gives us an already-presented diagnostic that will allow us to see, was this a plan that worked effectively? So, that is our plan for Achievers Academy at Con Oak Elementary School. And again, just one example of the great things that I think our schools are trying to do, to do school differently and more effectively in the 2021 year. And next, I have our middle school principal, Ms. Gentry, who's going to come and present that model. Yes, ma'am?
Just real quickly, in reviewing the slides, I just want to make sure that the middle school did say that transportation was provided, but it didn't say it with elementary? Is it going to be provided at Con Oak?
It is provided. For our school, that's a very small number of students. Majority of our students are car riders. So, we do have transportation that's provided as well as snacks and support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, School Board Members. Ms. McManus, I would just like to review the information from our program that we have at Southeast Middle School. And let me just click and move this. Our academy, we refer to as Ignite Academy, as if we are lighting a fire for a lot of these students. A lot of what Sheila said earlier was true in the numerous data points that are needed to really identify students' needs. And one thing at the high, excuse me, at the middle school level in particular that we have big concerns about is not just classroom assessment data, not just their grades for the quarter, not just their I-Ready data, but their level of engagement. And I think that speaks a little bit to the dilemma we were talking about earlier in regards to even our AG students. For the majority of our AG students who are participating, they continue to thrive and do well. But we, at the middle school level as well, are experiencing a decline and have for some time with their level of engagement. And it's created some difficult conversations, but much needed. So, that has also gone into our formula for who we target because we feel like we can't just go for one or two subgroups of students, and we can't use just one data point. So, our Ignite Academy has three components. We will be doing weekly tutoring on at least two afternoons a week. We will be offering virtual and in-person opportunities so the parent and student can choose which of those they prefer. Our tutors, when they do tutor, are going to do either virtual or in-person, but not both, so that that will take away that component there of having to struggle with a hybrid learning model. And we thought that they could get a lot more accomplished with small group instruction doing one or the other. Our second component is a Saturday program that will be about three to four hours long each of the Saturdays. Students will rotate through a series of sessions. And some of the focus, it will all be standards-based. It will all be based on all of the data that we have collected. But at the same time, we want an opportunity for the kids to step away from that computer. So, one huge conversation that we have had is about that balance. While we want to continue tracking our students when it comes to I-Ready or even edgenuity that we're going to be using, at the same time, we want to give the students opportunities to master those standards and not be in front of that computer. And that is where a lot of our planning comes in, which is already in progress. And I think that our tutors are very excited about those opportunities because we think that that will help to increase the level of engagement. We also will have a standards recovery program for our low-engagement students. And that will also come, and actually, the whole program will come with a mentoring component with our numbers at the school level who are going to be involved, where students who have had little to no engagement, and that includes your AG students and certain subgroups of students who have struggled for us and are targeted in our TSI support, we want to make sure that we get to those standards in the fall, those crucial, critical standards that they have missed, and really try to hit home the importance of mastering those standards as we head into the end of the school year. So, all of those components, as I said, will involve a mentoring piece, where not only will the tutors help to plan content and try to be creative, but they will also track their small groups of students as well. So, it's not just about, from a global perspective, collecting all the data, but it's more so regular check-ins with these students to monitor all of that data. Are their grades improving in class? Did their benchmark scores get better? How was their attendance? Is their engagement improved? How are they doing on several of these I-Ready standards where they were lacking at the beginning or middle of the year? And when we re-track that and reassess that, do we have improvement there? So, our resources will include I-Ready modules. We will also use the edgenuity that we have access to as well. And as we said before, transportation and snacks will always be provided so that that is not an obstacle to the engagement for those families. So, any questions from the middle school perspective?
I just want to say, I really do appreciate the point where the teachers are not going to be required to do the concurrent instruction. I know, I've been hearing that's extremely difficult to do. So, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. That was something that really rang loud and clear. We are just like Con Oak, where we have about 35 staff members who stepped up and said, I want to be a part of this program, which is allowing us to do very small group instruction. You know, the last thing we wanted to do was put 20 students in a room in front of a teacher. That was not going to be any more effective than what we're already trying to do. So, the smaller, the better. And they jumped on this opportunity. And that was one of the biggest conversations through the planning process of, hey, if you want this to work, we have to step away from that. And that has really paid off because we have some who are very skilled on the virtual end and some who are just as skilled, if not more, in person. So, we felt that was very important.
About how many students do you have participating? Do you?
So, our goal is 350 students, and that is a lofty goal. But we want to go lofty because if 350 participate, I'm going to be extremely happy. But looking at it, I do believe we can definitely get between 100 to 150 students, between all three components. And students can participate in more than one of these components because we have a feeling if a parent is interested in their child signing up for this, it's not just going to be, oh, I want them to come every Tuesday and Thursday. Usually, the response we're getting is, I want them in anything and everything possible. And we want to be able to do that for those families.
Ms. Mott Sanger?
Ms. Mott Sanger, you have a question?
Yeah. First, I'm really excited to see these programs happening. I think they're really important. My question is about sort of the social-emotional issues our students are having. Because I think a great deal of the difficulty with learning is the just challenges and trauma of the last year. And I'm wondering if there's a way that that's being addressed because I think this is awesome, but I also wonder about starting school at the beginning of the day and having a full school day and then tutoring without maybe some kind of physical activity, relational thing, way of expressing what, how it's been for them. Because I think that as much as our kids, again, have hurt academically, they've hurt personally. And I'm wondering how these programs can be addressing that.
And I do think that's a wonderful question. And a couple of things that we kept in mind from the social-emotional learning piece is that is why we developed the idea of having the mentorship so that it goes just beyond a conversation of, hey, how were your grades today? It's a one-on-one check-in where we can really kind of get to the root of, why is there, the why? Why is there low engagement? Why are your grades falling? And why do you think you did poorly on that assessment? And also, for us, being able to get the kids to step away from the computer will greatly reduce that feeling of isolation, which has led to a lot of these SEL issues and concerns that a lot of these students have fallen into. And so, we are hopeful by putting them in these situations, they can develop new friendships, they can develop new mentorships with teachers who they're finally seeing in person. But that is a wonderful question that we think about at the middle school level every single day and is at the forefront of our minds. And I think it's something that we have to put into our daily lessons, not just these academies and after-school programs.
Yeah. For example, I think getting outside, maybe being able to go outside and run around a little bit with your mask off before you go back inside might be helpful. Just literally getting them re-embodied is, I think, so important.
So, I had the pleasure of getting to substitute at Southeast a couple of weeks ago, and I had an eighth-grade social studies class who, Elizabeth, you'll appreciate this, I took them outside. It was a beautiful day, and we were, at the time, the forecast was for, you know, a bunch of rain to come up. So, I had my mom hat more than I had my teacher hat on of, we've got to get outside while it's still nice, and just had the kids talk. And it was, it took some pulling at first, but asking them a couple of questions like, what's been the hardest part of this past year? Or what are you looking forward to most? Once that faucet came open, it was unbelievable because in the classroom, just the way it is right now with the hybrid teaching and so much is on their Chromebooks, it's so quiet. It was painfully quiet for me. I couldn't stand it. And so, I was like, hurry up and finish your academics up, and then we're getting outside. And it was just, it just was really interesting to see how much the kids did have to say and what they've experienced. It's a lot more than we can really grasp right now.
They have not hesitated to let us know how they feel, which is wonderful.
And thank you so much for doing that and being out in schools and doing what you're doing as are other board members. That is wonderful. And I just hope that schools feel very empowered to take some of the pressure off on assessments in order to actually feel comfortable taking time with our kids. And I know how much people are committed to that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Any other last questions? Okay. At this time, I will turn it over for the high school program to Ed Weiss from Mount Tabor.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you all doing? I've wanted to do this for a long time. So, I'm going to do this for about 10 more seconds, but it feels good to smile in front of you guys and be in front of the board and the community and to be able to do things that maybe were normal at one time, which is to come here, celebrate our kids, recognize kids, recognize the work of this school district. So, I will go back to where I need to be for this part. But School Board, Superintendent McManus, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the High School Division, Mount Tabor High School. We appreciate, to give you some context, Mount Tabor and the High School Division has generally either been two or four cohorts, as you are aware. Mount Tabor is currently four cohorts with regards to our Spartan re-entry plan. We have averaged 120 to 140 students in person per cohort, including our OCS and MAP special POPS groups who have been coming four days a week since late November. Starting next week, we will add 100, in the area of 100 special POP students who have IEPs, 504s, or who have limited English. And they're going to be added to our 120 to 140 per cohort. We will then monitor very closely over the next couple of days to a week or two, heading into right before the end of our quarter, this added layer with the hopes of being able to take another step, which would be to combine our cohorts as our district plans to continue to examine trends plans to continue to examine trends and make plans for that, that next step for us. With me this evening is two thousand eighteen, nineteen Assistant Principal of the Year for our school district, Chris Applegate, and he and I together are going to share Mount Tabor's Extended Learning Plan. Mount Tabor's plan has four goals. The first goal centers around our tutoring academy, our tutoring efforts. This is offered after school, typically to our students on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. Students of all, all needs, both enrichment and struggling. We want to emphasize that we need to grab our kids whenever possible and wherever possible, whether that is before school, after school, flex Wednesday afternoons, face-to-face time, virtually, literally, wherever it takes and whatever it takes. Our primary focus will be on our EOCs. As you've heard Andy Kraft share our district data, as far as Math One, Math Three, Biology and English Two, but we certainly will continue with where we are as needed with regards to our seniors and students making their promotion standards from one grade to the other. We also plan to do this, obviously, with our teachers and include NHS peer tutors. Chris is going to share our, our goals two and three.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to focus a lot on our Saturdays. Basically, we have two things going on, on Saturdays. We're going to have a Saturday Academy, which is starting this Saturday, going to come in from nine to noon and offer students an opportunity to make up work, get extra help, just get that face-to-face time that a lot of students have been missing to try to catch them up. I know a lot of students that we did not hear from during remote learning, all of a sudden, once we opened cohorts, students started showing up. So I think if we offer this opportunity to catch up and to, to maybe grasp and grab on to some of the things that they've missed and maybe catch them up on Saturdays, it'll be a good thing. We've kind of budgeted for teachers, you know, trying to keep social distancing in mind, maybe that's fifty students on a really, really good Saturday. It might start slow this Saturday, and we're hoping to build that. In May, we're going to open up what we call our EOC Saturday Boot Camp. Each EOC teacher, all the, all, all three departments jumped in on this concept because it's a concept we've kind of done in the past, but we've really gone, kind of gone all in on it, is a boot camp concept of maybe it's not every Saturday, it might be consolidated into the last two Saturdays right before exams to really, really drill down on test-taking strategies, techniques, remediation, all those things so that a student walking into their exam, they're like, they're ready and they're confident to, to, to jump in on that test. So we're going to kind of go all in on that towards the end of May. So the Saturday schools are going to run from March through May. Those are going to jump in on May. We, we are looking at some transportation opportunities with our activity buses. I, I want to finalize some of that. I have a few questions on that that we're going to finalize. Going to work with some business partners as far as, you know, snacks and drinks and things like that. That's pretty simple. But overall, we, we really are looking to try to grab our Saturdays and really offer some of that in-person opportunity for students. But also for that student who's, who's reluctant to come in, we do have the hybrid capabilities. So a student could literally dial in on a Saturday and call in and be a part of, you know, some of that tutoring that's going on. So we, we probably want to de-emphasize that a little bit because as we've heard from our colleagues before, you know, it gets a little bit lengthy or not lengthy, but, you know, students, everybody's screen time, everybody's zoomed out a little bit in some ways. But if that student wants to remain remote, there's still that opportunity. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris. All right, our, our fourth goal is our senior squeeze and support. This is our face-to-face with everything under the sun, face-to-face, virtual, front doorsteps, before-school, after-school, flex day, Saturdays, and now to the end of June for everyone that we consider our endangered seniors. These are students, obviously, in danger of, of, of being behind heading into the, the month of May and would not be eligible for graduation with us. We want to utilize CARES teams, our counselors, staff, teachers, administration, administrative assistants, fully an all-hands-on-deck approach. Ms. Mottzinger, if you could hear me, I want to kind of share the social-emotional piece from a high school student. For us, that support begins with conversations. It begins with three-way calls with parents. It begins with Zoom conferencing. It begins with students in breakout rooms. This continues with CARES team efforts, school counselors, teachers, principals and admin and school counselor mentoring. A football game the other night, you wouldn't know how therapeutic a football game with the band and cheer and dance and football players out there and schools cheering against one another, wanting to, you know, just be in an atmosphere that was normal for them. So we've done lots of drive-bys. Those are all parts of all of our schools at the High School Division doing whatever's necessary right now. So you have a tutoring academy, you have Saturday concepts, and you have certainly a senior squeeze from our, from our standpoint. We'd like to thank you for your leadership and support and care through all times this past year as well. We've navigated a lot of things, from our closure to deployment of everything under the sun as far as resources to our community. We've had a seamless change in leadership and everything in between. We appreciate your coordination of resources, safety measures extended to our faculties and staff and our students to keep them safe. We appreciate your listening ear as we navigate what educators do, and that's partnering with parents, encouraging and molding, shaping, and doing whatever it takes to keep a student progressing towards their graduation goals and completion of hopefully answering the question that they're future-ready at the end of high school. So I appreciate the opportunity to share on behalf of our school and, and my colleagues in the High School Division. I hope you heard me there, Ms. Mottzinger. Any questions?
I, I put myself on the giant screen, just so you know I was listening carefully. Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Weiss?
The only question I have for all of this-
I want you to know that how much I appreciate you, and I know the rest of the board does as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, my question has to do with, you know, in hearing before-school, after-school, and Saturdays, I'm, I'm wondering about compensation because I keep hearing teacher volunteers, and that has me really concerned.
So it's actually not teacher volunteers. We are compensating our teachers, and so we are paying them a, a hourly rate that's in a board policy.
Thank you.
So it's the same pay across the district. Yes, ma'am.
Can I, you know what? I think the reason principals are using the word volunteer is because after such a challenging year, you would, it, it's great that even for compensation, people are saying, I'll do Saturdays, I'll do after-school. So we are very appreciative of our, of our teachers for, for wanting to, to help with this extra learning, so.
Yeah.
I think the teachers of our school district, Mount Tabor and the High School Division, appreciate the compensation as well, so thank you.
Well, they, they definitely don't get compensated enough, but, and I, you know, I, I know they've, they've worked doubly hard this year, and then to, to add on to, to want to continue to help our students who are behind, I just, that's just what educators do. And so we are so, you know, we're blessed in this, in this district with that, so thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you to our, our principals who are here. And Dr. Pratt. Next, we have extended learning opportunities for the summer school. Cheryl Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. Ms. McManus? I was looking at the agenda and saw summer programs or summer school there and thought, oh, no. So we kind of want to take away that negative connotation of summer school and think summer programs and what we're going to offer our students this summer. So I know it's just one word, but that one word makes a difference in how people feel about the services that we will offer this summer.
That's right. Summer opportunities.
Yes, thank you. So as we look to the opportunities and the purpose of extended learning, let me move my screen. I want you to realize that what we are doing for students or what we are doing for students, we're ensuring that students have experiential opportunities. Yes, learning, but engaging. Less screen time, hands-on, and most definitely fun. Strategic goals, and you consider our strategic goals, and the reason these pop-up words are here, it's vocabulary for my strategic goals, is that once you hear the various opportunities that will be provided for students this summer, you will see that by the time we provide all the opportunities for our students, we will have reached each one of these goals, touched each one of these goals in one form or fashion. We're even looking to connect with our community organizations and wraparound services for students because as we've realized, even before COVID, some of our children couldn't even participate in summer programs because the hours weren't conducive to what our families needed, and they needed before-after-school care for their students. So we're also working with organizations on that front. So take a look and note that, yes, there are two different numbers on this slide. You probably looked and said, oh, my, what is this? Someone missed their mouth. We did not. We have a target, and this target number of students that we would like to serve is based on, one, our program directors pretty much set out a criteria based on data. And that criteria that was determined for students in grades one through eight brought us to this number of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-five students. So that doesn't include high school. That doesn't include some of the other data that you may have seen. This was just grades one through eight and at data points for reading and math. With that being said, though, the number that you see from the table, the total, that particular number represents our at-risk-of-retention population. So more than likely, those same students in that five thousand seven hundred seven number are within the bigger of, for the most part. But at the same time, that's the reason that you'll see the two variances of the numbers, the, the numbers that are reported here for you. So to move into the various programs that will be offered, and keep in mind that while you'll see various programs offered, not all of them are necessarily funded, you'll see the budget at the very end. Some of them are funded through outside sources as well. So with that being said, first, we have our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers. If you did not hear or have heard of before, Twenty-First Century Centers came out of grant funding. Our district don't necessarily have a grant department, but we have grant writers. And so with that being said, our, there's a department that has worked to provide this grant or to seek this grant, and so these four schools will be impacted by Twenty-First Century, and that's approximately fifty students per site that will receive this particular service. So those students receive academic enrichment, and there's a parental component added with it as well. Thankful for the opportunity to be able to expand Freedom Schools this summer. This was something that we looked for last summer, but because of COVID, we were only able to have one, not necessarily onsite, but served with one school. This summer, we will be able to do that expansion as we had visioned before, and that's approximately fifty students per site as well. So, oh, I thought I heard a question, but Seeds of Hope is actually an outside organization. This particular organization will serve approximately a hundred students, STEM, mind activity, PE, soccer, there, there'll be a lot of activity for students within this program as well. And I guess I should go back just in case someone did not have the background for Freedom Schools. Freedom Schools is just another opportunity for our students, empowering our youth, having them to excel and, and build self-confidence, self-awareness, and self-esteem, and it also enhances the motivation to read. Doesn't necessarily teach reading, but does build that motivation to read.
This is Elizabeth. Can I just make a, ask a question about the Freedom Schools? I know the model usually uses college students as the tutors. Is that what we're going to be following, or are our own staff going to be part of the leaders?
Both. So-
Both?
Yes, both. So each school working with the partners, and all of the partners aren't necessarily listed here on the slide. The only ones that I listed on the slide were those that will be off-campus. But as the partners are working with the school, they will work towards multi-generational staff for that center and for that site. So Freedom Schools isn't necessarily just, just the college-age students. It's actually a combination of, but yes, they are looking to hire both.
Because, and, and I'm hoping that some of the other freestanding Freedom Schools will be operating this summer as well. My, part of the reason I'm excited about that is that the curriculum and so much of what they use is so rich in terms of what we're trying to do as far as infusion curriculums and that it's such an extraordinarily good model of helping all students see themselves in a very positive light. So I'm excited about having some of our staff be a part of that.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, the freestanding, Sunnyside will be the freestanding this summer, but those that are typically served at Wake Forest, those students will actually work at Cook, with Cook. There's something that was taking place on the campus of Wake Forest, so they're working in partnership to serve students of Cook this summer, as well as some of the others that they typically serve.
So Ms. Wright, before you leave this screen-
Oh, that is really excellent.
But before you leave the screen, so like, is just, is just Old Town at Sinfrenters or whatever, or, okay, so the, the school beside of where the, the site is, is, is the only school being served at, at that site? The rest of them, are they at their school?
They're at their school, yes.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
And, and even before leaving the screen, so again, when we talk about opportunities, if you'll take a moment and look, Twenty-First Century's Community Learning Centers, Ashley, that's approximately fifty students from Ashley in a program, but then Ashley turns around and has Freedom Schools as well on top of the other programming that will be in place for children to be able to participate.
One other thing I wanted, this is Elizabeth, one other thing I wanted to say about Freedom School is that Representative Amber Baker, who is representing Winston-Salem for the first time in the General Assembly, was very instrumental in getting Freedom, the first Freedom School in a public school and has worked on that for years. So I'm sure that she is very happy that our district is growing it so well. And I just wanted to give a little shout-out to Dr. Baker for all the work she did for many years.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more comment before we leave the slide. It's there, we had some conversation, and I think Elizabeth, I know you were part of this group as well, is in the past when we had the Freedom School at Wake Forest and then the one at Kimberly Park and then Sunnyside, but we, we were trying to, not just with Freedom Schools, but all of these other extended opportunities, to, to try to look at their impact on our students. Have we, and I know, I think maybe even Dr. Roseborough at, at one point was part of that conversation, but how we could identify the student and then, you know, be able to track like we kind of do for our own program? Are we going to be able to do that?
So actually, it's good that you mentioned her name because she actually was on some of our planning with Freedom Schools and with some of our partnerships with that, and that's been the same ask for us to be able to capitalize on our accountability department to kind of step in to see, okay, either utilizing the data that they use or to have our own data sources within so that we can see the change over time with those students have participated in those programs.
Well, and I think it helps us, but I, I know also that as they seek additional funding for more sites, that would, would help them as well, so, okay, thank you.
And then you'll hear from Ms. Vanessa Osborne shortly, but keep in mind that Pathways Decay and One, that particular program has always been established to serve students who needed additional practice, foundational skills in literacy, math, and science, and that one also comes with a parental component. And then the typical, our traditional summer enrichment that will be held as well this summer, and this particular summer, there was actually some funding that came about to help with scholarship for approximately fifty students? Was it thirty? Approximately thirty students? So I'll up the numbers. Yeah, that's still good, yes, still good. So scholarships for approximately thirty students. Now, there's always been a scholarship component within it. However, this particular, the thirty students, there's a focus on where those students will be able to come in and participate. Yes?
Before we go through too many slides, under purpose, can you elaborate a little bit about what educational services are going to be provided for the families?
Yes, so several of these programs, there are a parental component that's in, in place, and so oftentimes, so what we use is, we actually take the survey that we were adapted through Forsyth Promise to survey our families to see exactly what some of those needs are. So some of those needs could be as simple as, how do I help my student at home? But those could be broadened into, how do I grow my- But those could be broadened into, how do I grow myself so that I'm able to grow my child, but also grow within the community? And so there'll be different, um, offerings that'll take place over the summer. Connecting with Forsyth Tech, connecting with some other organizations so that parents can tap into the resources of the community.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Um, so this summer, something new, uh, CTE is actually going to provide some credit, um, credit courses so that students can earn, um, master credentials. So that'll be a new offering and something different. Um, select amount of students, and particularly, it could be a select, um, amount of schools that they would be in, but that would be another piece or another part to summer services being offered. Yes, are familiar with our senior squeeze and our credit recovery? Um, those students in need of additional credits to graduate or to be on track with their cohort. Advanced learning, so there's pocket for those students as well. Um, IBAP and those who are, um, within particularly the grades of three through eight, those students that are in, and Ms. Lemley is already thinking through like theme-based weeks, um, to have students be able to have experiential opportunities. Do language immersion and high school language. So, um, that goes with the bridging to the next grade, to the next course, to the next class. And of course, our English language learners within that same umbrella to help bridge skills. Sorry, jumped off the screen, okay? And then under EC, exceptional children. So we have the ESY, Extended School Year. We have future services, and then we have compensatory services. And so students with five oh four IEPs, those who have not quite met their progress just yet, um, or based on their IEP indicated a full year of service, as well as the compensatory, those that, um, for some reason or another, perhaps the district has not been able to meet the goals for the students. So that's the opportunity for those students as well. And something new this, this year, um, science, math, and, who am I? It's an ELA. Again, a, a different bridge opportunity for students who are bridging into various courses. Um, and so that could be some eighth-grade students moving up to ninth grade, and then, of course, those who are already currently at the high school level, moving into different courses. And our typical RISE and Jump Start. And I say typical RISE, Jump Start, but not with the same RISE, Jump Start flavor. And the reason both of them are listed is because at this time, we still don't know, yes or no, whether some of our families would want the opportunity for remote. Um, still not that comfort of. So that's where we have Jump Start on one lens, but at the same time, we have RISE on the other lens to provide some of what they've received in the past of the reading support or the math support for those students who have experienced academic loss through COVID. Um, and it's an impact, you know, because of the impact of COVID. But then also keep in mind, there's always been that, those students that were in the gap regardless of COVID. So being able to have those experiences for these students. But of course, making sure there's a lot of opportunity for, um, fun activity and engaging activity. And of course, we still have the question of what will the retoachieve mandate be? And so we're still working towards that. And then I just kind of close up with our, the details of, um, through all of this, keeping classroom sizes small, um, just the greater impact of how we can work towards all of students across the district. And then here is the projected budget. Um, keep in mind that transportation comes with a nice price tag, so it's not there. And of course, that's something that is difficult to project out, not knowing how many students or which students will participate, and then getting those students strategically placed to the various schools that we'll select, um, for the summer program. So several of the members of the Pre-Planning Committee are online. It's just been a collaborative, so when I talked about strategic goal, again, this has been a very collaborative effort. Not only that, um, many of them are behind the scenes still working to perfect these programs so that our babes will have great programming when they come in during the summer. But if there's any questions beyond my scope, they too are on the line to support.
Any questions? I only had one observation. I noticed your target numbers for middle school were much higher than your other grades. And so I guess that's indicative of, of, that we have middle schoolers who really need to, some good foundation building or, or whatever.
Yes, and, and honestly, so I'm going to use some of the knowledge I have from working with remote learning centers. I've noticed over this season, I received a lot more calls from middle school parents for support than elementary. Elementary, for, for the most part, was about care and just eyes on. But for the middle school, it was the, the engagement, the, the need was a lot greater. At, at least that's what I could see.
And, and Marilyn, I'm hearing from, uh, the, you know, my son's principal about, um, they've seen a steady decline in engagement from middle schoolers, and they're brainstorming, you know, what can they do for incentives? And, um, you know, to get them to log in, to get them to turn in assignments. I mean, it's, it's starting to be a real struggle at the middle school level.
Yeah, I, I can, yeah, that, that goes along totally with, with what middle schoolers are, are experiencing in life. And I know that I about get a sick feeling every time I have to go on another Zoom meeting, so I can relate.
If I could just speak to the middle school piece. Um, just knowing that what our middle school students go through on a normal, in the normal world, they're going through adolescence, trying to figure out who they are, trying to figure out where they fit in, trying to find their individuality and independence. And then to put this into a, a COVID environment where they're isolated, it's really taking away that social need that they have to grow and mature. And so we have seen, that's the area that we're most concerned about. That's the area that principals are most concerned about with the engagement. You know, our elementary kids are just kind of enjoying themselves. High school kids have a focus, at least to get ready for college and the next step. And our middle school students are really struggling. So that is going to be our largest target group. And then to what Cheryl has shared, Ms. Wright shared about our RISE program, one of the things we want to do differently is really have a higher emphasis on science this summer. So we want the kids to be face-to-face. We want to focus on reading. We want to focus on limited computer time, hands-on mathematics, problem-solving, but science. We want them to use their hands and engage in discovery and problem-based learning. And so that'll be our biggest focus for the summer.
Great, yep.
But, uh, Elizabeth, I just want to say one other thing, um, as a shout-out to Cheryl Wright in particular. We used to, we had a period a while back where we farmed out summer school to a, a service provider. And the results got so much better when we grew a lot of this in-house. We have so many talented staff. And I just have to give a huge shout-out to Cheryl for doing such a great job in making that happen. So thank you.
And I want to echo that, too. We're asking her to do like five times as much as she's done before in expanding the programs, expanding the reach, and expanding the number of students served. And no matter what she's focused on, including this and learning centers, she does it with grace, with patience, and a collaborative spirit, all within the effort to support our children and our families. So I, I echo that as well.
Yes, very much so. We, we are blessed. Anything else for this? Okay. Pre-K program application period, Teresa Bean?
Good evening, and thank you so much, um, and to the board members and Dr. McManus for the opportunity to talk about the pre-K application process, which I am so excited that we have finally arrived at the time to look at applications for the upcoming school year. Our pre-K applications will be available on Monday, March the fifteenth. Um, they will be available online. Parents will have the opportunity to complete the application online and upload documents that are required for the pre-K application. Um, a link will be added to our pre-K webpage that will take families directly to Smart Starter Forsyth County, where they can upload their application and the required documents. I will have to say that I'm so excited about our collaborative partnership with Family Services Head Start, Smart Starter Forsyth County, as we're working to increase enrollment, enrollment across the county and to serve four-year-old children in high-quality pre-K programs. We're also building a relationships with, um, agencies in the community like Child Care Resources, which is an agency that helps family, families find high-quality childcare environments in Forsyth County. So the pre-K application process. I looked online to see how many visitors have been online to look at the pre-K webpage over the last month. And since February the first, we've had one thousand seven hundred and sixty visits to our pre-K webpage, which means that families are looking into, they're trying to find out when that application's going to become available. I can't wait to see what that number will look like at the end of next week, once we go live. Families may, um, also get applications from the elementary schools that we currently have pre-K programs on-site. Each elementary school with a pre-K classroom received fifty applications in English, fifty in Spanish, as well as flyers to distribute to the community. And I'd like for you to see our pre-K webpage. And this is, I'm modifying our webpage as we go along. And as soon as the application is available on Monday, the, a link that I have for the application will be, will be live. But this is just an idea of what our page looks like. And on our webpage, we have information about Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, where families can get free resource books. Um, I also put information out there about North Carolina Foundations and Early Learning Standards, which is what we use as our standard course of study in pre-K. And also some learning progressions for families, not only for preschool-age children, but from birth to age five. Things that parents can do with their families, um, at home.
Can we also include a link to the public library so that people can get a card?
Yes, definitely, definitely, yes.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, because of COVID and some, in, some children, I'm hearing in my preschool world that, um, some children who, that they, they don't want to send them to kindergarten this year, they, but they would like for them to go to a preschool program and, and maybe a, um, a school, school-based one. Um, are you going to accept only four-year-olds? Or do, can they be kindergarten age and be in, in a public four-year-old program?
Due to the funding that we receive, the children have to be four years old on or before August the thirty-first.
Okay, so they can't be five before that time, okay.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Countdown to Kindergarten Update, Vanessa Osborne. Um, and Vanessa, I think you're remote, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you Superintendent McManus and Chair Woodbury and all the board members. Our Countdown to Kindergarten District-wide Enrollment Event for rising kindergarten students, uh, was once again on the snow day, February twenty-fourth. There is a link to the PowerPoint you all received that shows, um, the, the variety of events and the ways that the event was conducted this year by schools. Some held virtual presentations, gave virtual tours. Some gave in-person tours by appointment only with, um, families who wanted to come in and see the school. The children that were enrolled for kindergarten are, um, are enrolled online if they're new to the district, and they're enrolled with paper pencil applications for updates for our current pre-K children. Our outreach, um, we had banners, um, links on our, our webpages. Our flyers were sent out to our community, community partnerships. And we went out and around town distributing those flyers um, to places like the public library. We had, um, public service announcements on social media. We had the bus tails, the city bus tails, and the, um, Wista buses, again, on ten buses for the month of February. And the flyers were also distributed by Hungry Howies on their pizza boxes for their two biggest weekends of, of the year, and put in the food that was delivered for, on two weekends by Hope of Winston-Salem. Schools also did their own outreach. They each had their own webpage banner and, um, an editable flyer that they made up for themselves to put out for their families. We also put out yard signs that you may have seen around town. Every school had yard signs through the car rider lines. Um, the YMCA's agreed to put those up, also the city parks, and several different shopping centers. A lot of those yard signs are still up because there is a QR code on there that takes them directly to the online enrollment lane. Um, in addition to our four-hundred-plus four-year-old pre-K students who are eligible for kindergarten in the fall, um, we have enrolled approximately six hundred and twenty-five more rising kindergarten students. So that brings our total to about a thousand twenty-five students. Last year, um, at the point, after Ca, uh, Countdown to Kindergarten, we had a thousand ninety-seven. So we are not but a few children off from where we were last year. And we'll continue to build our, um, enrollment by having our pop-up enrollment centers uh, in our, um, communities where the enrollment is low right now. So that's going to occur in, um, the Cook, Easton, Forest Park neighborhoods, that, those areas. And we will, um, we work with the, um, City of, of Winston and, um, the Housing Authority, the community centers, at the recreation centers, public libraries, with, um, pediatricians and other folks that are part of our, um, enrollment, uh, process and the health assessments that kindergarten children have to have. So any place where families gather, you might see our pop-up tent in the coming weeks and months, um, to help in boost that online enrollment.
Any questions? Great, thank you. And I think you're going to speak to us as well about the Week of the Young Child Fiftieth and a versary proclamation, correct?
Yes. So the Week of the Young Child is a national, um, event, a national celebration, annually sponsored by the National Association of the Education of Young Children. And the purpose of the week is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. And so, um, we have, um, a schedule of events that, um, child, early childhood teachers and educators can choose from. We are partnering with many of, uh, commu, our community partners and providing materials for teachers to plan events for this day. The Steering Committee has been working hard to get, um, a booklet out to teachers. This flyer's available, and will go out to all those same partners where it mentioned again for enrollment, to make sure that, um, that attention is, that well-deserved attention is brought to the forefront for young children. So we have a culminating program on the last day and present proclamations to various young children around, um, the county and the city. So we are asking, um, Chair Woodbury to sign the proclamation again this year at the, um, the Board of Education meeting later in the month. And then, um, we will ask her to also present that to a child. There will be, um, a montage of photographs and video of all of the partners who are, um, taking part in this, the signing of those proclamations, and then also the presenting of it to children. Um, we've asked mayors, we've asked county commissioners. Uh, we have quite a, a lot of folks who want to take part in it this year. And we will culminate on the last day with a, um, a drive-through event for families and their children at, um, the fairgrounds. And they will get to see the video and picture montage up on the big screen at the drive of all, um, different events around the, around the district for, um, the Week of the Young Child and the celebrations. So you might see children singing songs, reciting nursery rhymes, um, all the presentations and the proclamation signings, and the good work that's going on in all of our, um, early childhood classrooms in the county and city.
Thank you. Any questions? I just have a comment. I'm so glad that they're making a huge deal out of Week of the Young Child. It used to be a huge event around town, and then, I think it was about thirty-five years ago, I was the community coordinator for, for that event. And I can't believe that it's been, you know, fifty years that, that it's been happening. But it, I, I'm so glad that it's going to be a big community celebration again, because our young children are special. So, thank you for all your work and effort in that, and Chair Woodbury for signing the proclamation. Thank you. All right, and last but not least, we have Dr. Kato with High School Graduation Update.
Good evening, Curriculum Committee members. Glad to be here this evening to share with you on the hot topic of graduation planning. We've been working on this since beginning of January, early January. We have the, the, last year when the pandemic hit, you know, there was a lot of unknowns. We just didn't know what was going to happen, and so we were in a very precarious position. We're still in a precarious position, but at least we have a lot more knowledge about what we need to do and how we can go about doing it. And so we started in early January having conversations with finance, legal operations around different aspects of, that would affect graduation in June. Talked with high school principals, district leadership, and actually bought in a committee of seniors, parents, and student services members. And so we're kind of in the middle of this timeline here that you see before you. I'm looking at logistics, continuing to communicate with our seniors and our parents and student services members and district leadership. And we, here we are today updating you early March. And we hope to be able to make some decisions, some final decisions in the next couple of days, actually. Things have really accelerated quite nicely here the past few days. Just for record's sake, you know, these are some of the individuals that helped, that have, that are still helping and are very instrumental in helping us make decisions around graduation and end-of-year events. Those individuals listed there from central office. But the student representatives, every year, regardless of what committee I'm on, the student representatives just always blow me away because they're just so poised, and they're so articulate, and they're so knowledgeable about what needs to happen and, and various situations. And so we have representatives from multiple high schools. Almost all of our high schools had at least one representative. Some of them had more than one. And we had parent representatives from multiple high schools as well. Last year, we were only able to get three or four parents. This year, we have eleven. Very good people, very good representatives of their schools and the parents and the students here in our district. Very proud to be able to work with them. And so what we would like to be able to provide, and what we've all discussed, is how do we go about providing a safe and more traditional face-to-face option for our class of 2021 during graduation ceremonies? We believe that we can do this safely. We believe that we can do it, believe we can do it safely, that's the main thing. We believe that we can give this opportunity to our students to have a, a more memorable, more traditional, in a more traditional way, ceremony. We're looking at the dates of June 9th through 11th for those ceremonies. And based on the current information that we have, and we have no reason to believe that it's going to be any different in June, we will, we're planning to operate and have our ceremonies on our campuses. In our football stadiums, those schools that don't have them, we have options for them as well at a reduced capacity. Currently, the governor kind of threw us a curveball a couple of weeks ago. We had a plan, then something came out. And so we've been working to figure out how we can still plan, not really knowing what may happen in the future. But we do believe that we'll be operating at some reduced capacity at our, at our home football stadiums. And, which will require some of our larger schools to operate, to, to hold more than one ceremony, hold ceremonies in cohorts. No school would have more than two groups to have to manage. And we would give out a specific number of tickets to families, a number, a specific number of guests based on the capacity at that time. And we're, we're hoping, and we believe that we'll be about forty to fifty percent, forty percent or higher at that time, we hope, by June. But we would work with each individual school to figure out, but there's already, they've already figured it out, the numbers of guests that each student will be able to bring. There will be no less than six, some schools will have more. There'll be no more than ten, between six and ten guests that students will be able to bring with them to the ceremony at their respective school. We're continuing to look at the governor's orders and public health guidance and all so we can really give some definitive dates and times. That's happening a lot faster than we thought it would. Talked to the high school principals earlier today. We feel really good about the plan. The students and the parents also felt really good about the plan. And so we think we can make this happen and make it happen in a very memorable and meaningful way. You may have some, I'm pretty sure you have some questions. I will, I will entertain those now.
So during the, so the graduation task force with the student representatives, shouldn't it be, shouldn't they have one for every high school since, to really focus on the graduation of their school? I mean, I'm just saying I don't see Reynolds in that with the student representatives.
But we, we can, we can invite people, but we can't make them come to the meeting.
Oh, okay, so you didn't invite everybody?
Yes, ma'am. There, there were multiple people invited from every school. There are multiple students and multiple parents, and these were the ones that have stepped up.
Okay, okay, thanks for clarifying.
It is very odd not to have a Reynolds representative from a student. That is very different, not to have that from Reynolds.
Other questions?
I had a, so, and I, first of all, I want to, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that, that you and all that, all of those that you showed us on the other slide had put into this. I know that we're, you know, we can put out dates for families so that they can hold, hold those dates, and I know that we just don't know capacity-wise and all those restrict, you know, all the, what, what we have to go through. The one thing that, and I appreciate trying to do it on, you know, on campus for those high schools that have facilities on campus. But could we, I mean, is there a way, would we be able to not have multiple graduation ceremonies for some of our larger high schools if we were able to move to a facility that was, you know, a Wake Forest stadium or some other facility that was off, that was off-site? I just know that not everyone, that your, you know, that your buddy might be in your alphabetical section. I don't know how we would split that up, but those are, you know, memorable moments. And, and if there were, the only thing I would say is if there was any way possible, even if it meant to move from your, your campus to something else, if you could be there with, with your entire class. And that may not work just because of the restrictions that, that, you know, that we're facing. But I, I would, you know, if I put myself back in, you know, high school and, you know, at East Forsyth back in nineteen eighty-nine, we graduated on the football field around nine o'clock. But, you know, we, we were, you know, we could just pack in. So I know we can't do that now, but that'd be my, that's my only thing is could, could they possibly? And I'm sure this will be something when parents and students start to hear this conversation, and then they start to email the board and, and staff members as well, is what, what are those kind of cutoff dates? Like, when do we have to make a plan? And then even if the restrictions or guidance or guidelines change, we're kind of stuck without plan. You know, tho, those are things I think that people are going to ask us, and, you know, we'll just hit forward to our superintendent. But if we, if we have some of that information, we can try to help.
Well, there, there are some districts last year that limited everybody to two guests. I mean, and if we wanted to do that, then we could get everybody in. But we don't want to, the, the group didn't want to limit guests that, to that lower of a number. And so in order to be able to have multiple guests come at a reduced capacity, we would have to have multiple groupings of students at some of our larger schools, particularly West and Reagan. And the, the capacities of our stadiums are really interesting because they, they're, they're, I guess there's no rhyme or reason to them. I guess whenever they were built, they're not all the same. And so, you know, like in Atkins, even though they don't have a large graduating class, they have a very small stadium. And at one time, we were looking at them having like three or four different groups of kids in order to be able to even use their stadium. But we've worked it out to where nobody would have more than two groups. And if by some chance there's a miracle and everything opens up by June, you know, we can get everybody in. But we, we tried to get everybody at least on one day as opposed to spread over multiple days and in the mornings. And so they would have a ceremony, let's say like nine o'clock, and then you may have another one at noon. So they're, they're all in the same day, and they can actually plan to go have lunch or dinner or do things together as a, as a graduating class. There's also some, some energy around having some senior activities, end-of-year activities to, that would bring them together and for them to be able to, to have that connection with one another, because they've not been in school at all together all year. Unlike last year's group, at least they had some school up until March. The other venues currently, we, we talked about this earlier. You, you, you're in a situation where either you take your own destiny in your hands and make the plans, and so you know what's going to happen, or you wait to see what's going to happen with the state. And like right now, the Coliseum, they are now taking events again, but they're limited to twenty-one hundred people. That's not going to help a West, Oregon, or East. The annex is not large enough to fall under the governor's current order, and so they can't really do anything outside of maybe like a hundred or two hundred people. The Dash Stadium was talked about once, and they're limited to two thousand people outdoors. And so this, it, it's one of those situations where either we can make the decisions and plan so people can know, or we can wait until May, like we did last year. And people can't plan their trips, they can't plan their families coming in until a later date. So that was a, that was a hard decision to, to make, but that was, but the group kind of felt like we really needed to get ahead of.
And so the larger football, like Grove Stadium or some of those would not work?
Which one?
Like Wake Forest, where they play their football games?
Oh, I asked about that, and they, I was told that it's probably, we can't afford that. But to cover the field, to cover, to cover the field and do some other things.
So who do we know at Wake Forest? Come on, it's a great resource.
So if we're looking at the.
I was told that by somebody not in our system. I was told that by someone who knows how much it would cost.
Okay. So I'm, I'm curious at what the gap is between what the thirty percent number is. Isn't that what the outdoor venues are at now, thirty percent? So what's that number for some of these schools that would be affected, like a West or a Reagan? And what's the difference between and who would, you know, what we're, what we want the capacity to be?
So we're, so I, I don't have those numbers directly in front of me. I have a, a big sheet that has thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent for all the schools, every stadium. What we are, what we are making an educated, informed assumption is that we're going to be at much higher than thirty percent by the time June rolls around. Right now, at thirty percent, some of our schools are fine. I mean, but half of our schools, their, their class sizes are small enough to where their whole graduating class is not an issue. But some of our larger schools, if we can get to forty percent at least, we'll be in good shape with those numbers of them being able to bring a minimum of six.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to gauge, is it, is it fifty seats or five hundred seats? Or, because I, I, I think the other option is to bring in seating and increase the capacity. You know, you rent bleachers for these, I mean, all these stadiums have extra room to put extra seats, and that could be.
Yes, that's, that's part of the.
Running BB and T Field.
That's part of the continued planning or the logistics. And we do have, we do have a vendor. Apparently, a lot of these vendors went out of business during the pandemic. There's one man left standing. And so he has everybody else's chairs and tables and everything. And so we're trying to work with them, but we have to get ahead of all the other districts so that he can provide the things that we need for our district, stages and chairs and such. Ms., Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, and another venue to consider would be the Tanglewood Field, because that's large enough, and that would provide parking. But you would, of course, need to have the, the seating and the stage, but that could cover all of the, the population with the schools.
Ms. Mott Singer, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that, first and foremost, I hope that graduation is for the students and that they are central. I personally think that if you offer less tickets to begin with and you can open more, that leads to a great deal more happiness than if you start with more and have to take away. And so I would really encourage, even though it feels like a little bit of a wet blanket, to say you're going to start with two tickets or three tickets and expand as you're able to. People will be happy to get more tickets closer to time and will be devastated to start, start having them taken away. And I know every one of us is really hoping that we are on the other side of this and that numbers are only going to get better. But I think it's a little early to jump to that conclusion. I think it's wiser to, I mean, this is a big deal. Last year, kids didn't get to go to a graduation. And this year, we're talking about all of our students being able to attend. And having two tickets says, you know, you're going to have a couple parents there with you, no matter what. That's an option. I just think that it's wiser to start smaller and grow bigger than to start big and have to cut if necessary. Thanks.
I agree with you, Ms. Mott Singer, thank you.
And not everybody needs six tickets. There's a lot of kids at graduations who come with, you know, one person who cares about them, and the other five seats are empty. So, I mean, there, it, I feel like the more time we give people the plan with giving them the date and what the minimum is going to be, and then people start figuring it out from there. What, what is the plan for schools that don't have football stadiums on campus?
So Kennedy and Winston-Salem Prep will go to Atkins. Winston-Salem Prep's home field is at Atkins anyway. Kennedy doesn't have athletics. Middle and Early College, they graduate in May, they will go to Deaton Thompson. And Reynolds and Parkland will be at Deaton Thompson. I think that's everybody that doesn't have a stadium.
Mr. Bohannon?
Dr. Kato, so in a pre-COVID environment, if you graduated in the annex, were those, were students getting tickets then? Or was it just, you could just invite whoever you want?
I think you could invite whoever you wanted, but they had tickets for the, the purposes of knowing how many people were in a building, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And you said that right now, really, all of the schools are, are kind of fine except for Reagan and West. Is that what you said?
No.
No? Okay.
No. Half of our schools, some of our smaller schools, regardless of where you have it, they're going to be fine because they don't have, 75 graduates at Kennedy, 60, I think 65 at the Early College. Middle College is maybe 60. Carver is 100, a little bit less than 200, I think, maybe a little bit more than 200. You know, North Forsyth, about 300, but when you start getting into Mount Tabor, they're almost at 400. West is at 595. Reagan is at 585. So yeah, when you get to the larger schools, then that's when it becomes an issue.
And there would need to be multiple ceremonies, there would have to be multiple ceremonies.
No more than two, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can we look into Tanglewood just a little bit? I mean, they can handle about 50,000. The bathrooms might be an issue, but that could be a solution.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'd also like bringing in additional seating to increase the capacity to be considered because I do think we should do everything possible to have graduations as a high school. It should not be in two sections.
Right.
Dr. Kato, I just wanted to add the executive order limits the capacity based off the stated fire capacity. So we may not be able to add seats to expand that capacity because it's based off the stated fire capacity.
Okay. I mean, I still think it's something we should explore. I mean, we're, again, we're in extraordinary times and we should be looking for extraordinary solutions.
Dr. Kato, also, if the concern is that you want students to be able to graduate, because I understand the desire to want to graduate with your friends and also have, you know, a number of parents or family members or people that you want to invite, you know, be there. Is there some, I'm wondering if there's some virtue to sort of looking at how we're sort of organizing the different graduation ceremonies if you have to have more than one. So as opposed to just kind of outright saying A through L is on this day or then L through whatever the Z, is the, is, you know, goes on the second date that we kind of look at that to see maybe what does a potential opportunity for people to sign up for their preferred date? What does that look like? Just so that, you know, we're kind of looking into options to give people some additional choice. Maybe they'll feel a little bit better about that. I know that creates some logistical concerns, but at the very least, it's something to consider.
Thank you. That is a very good comment. Yeah, I know for, like at Atkins, they graduate by majors and so they're going to choose which majors go on which day. So it wouldn't be necessar, they always graduate by majors. So that's an easy way for them to split their folks up. But the other schools, I agree with you, it might be, it'd be worth exploring some intentional ways of setting up the cohorts.
Will the services be, or the ceremonies be streamed as well so that people don't have to attend in person? I mean, it could be something that kind of solves itself by offering the virtual, you know, offering people the option to watch it virtually.
We have the technology. Now, how good it is, I'm not sure. We have the technology that we use with athletics. But how good that will work and the sound and all is something that we have to work through with our athletic folks and the company that we're using currently to stream our athletic events and the website and setting up all that, that information, those items. But it has been discussed.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Kato.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
I'm sure there'll be more to come.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Chair Parker, I'm sorry. I did have, I had one more question.
Okay, go right ahead.
For the superintendent regarding the ELOs. It's a follow-up on Board Member Crowley's question about compensation. So I noticed that we were talking a lot about the compensation for teachers, but I wondered what, if there was additional compensation for other staff that would be working in the building, like custodians during that time, especially on the Saturdays?
So that is a good question. I know that each school submitted their plans. I cannot, I don't know if Dr. Pratt or someone, Andrea, do you know the answer as far as compensating other staff members?
Well, we were trying to make sure that the money that was available to use for this would be used, you know, for the students and for the learning. So we're trying to work with the schools to stagger their staff because we do have the Wednesdays that students are not in school. So we want to stagger staff so that they can still get their 40 hours, but not necessarily earn overtime because hourly folks would have to earn overtime in order to do that type of work. You know, some of our classified staff would earn overtime. So we were trying to avoid that with the cost. But we do want to have coverage for those areas. So we want to like do a staggered schedules so that on the Wednesdays, they can be off if they have a Saturday program, or they could be off if they have an afternoon program. So we will do something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That was your additional question, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So we have one action item to consider approval of the Week of the Young Child 50th Anniversary Proclamation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Finance Committee.
If we want to finance committee, we're going to have a report coming from Andrea Gillis and she's going to do the January financial statements and a budget amendment.
Hello again. Good afternoon, Board Members, Chair Woodbury, Ms. McManus. Today, we're going to review the January financial statements. Here we have the January balance sheet. As you can see, our assets and our liabilities and the fund balance do equal, which is good. This is for our general fund and our capital replacement fund. And this is the cumulative balance sheet as of the end of January. This next page is something you're more familiar with, which is our statement of revenues, expenditures, and incomparances. As you can see, our revenues are pretty much on schedule and on track from our prior year. We have about 50% of our revenues in. We have spent about 62% of our, I'm sorry, let's put down some more, 56% of our expenses, which is pretty much on track from the prior year as well. So we're pretty much on track for our spending based on prior year history. This next slide is the statement of revenue and expenditures and incomparances for our capital outlay funds. And once again, we are pretty much on track for revenues and expenditures. This is our statement of net position for proprietary funds. The statement of net position, we are still in a positive net position for child nutrition even though we do have some revenue loss for this year. And we also, right now, we are also in a deficit for our after-school program. That's because we have, you know, still offering the program, but have less revenues coming in and this deficit is related to the prior year. The next is our statement of revenues, expenses, and incomparances for our enterprise fund, child nutrition program. Right now, we have a net loss of $1.6 million. However, we do have a healthy fund balance there, so we're not as worried about that. We did anticipate having a $4 million net loss this year when we adopted our budget. So right now, I think we're looking pretty good for the end of the year.
So how are we on track, the same track as last year when, like, we haven't been driving buses like we have been or using buildings like we have been? How are we at the same percentage?
Because we used, we did the bonus this year. So we use that money to pay out that bonus. And we are doing other things, you know, we are spending more money on other things, like more money for PPE supplies and stuff like that. So where we spent less money on buses, we spent more money on other things. So we did, we did use the money with the savings we had to pay out that one-time bonus in November. And then this last page here is the statement of revenues, expenses, and incomparances for the enterprise fund of the daycare centers. And that is it for the financials. Next, we will go to the budget amendments. Thank you, Kevin. So we don't have that many budget amendments for January. We have a few for capital outlay. We have $276,598 for the purchase of three activity buses. This was brought to you in a meeting, a prior meeting, you know, by Lauren Richards. This is the actual transfer of the funds. We also had a budget amendment for $200,000 for the 2016 bond for Metallock Middle School and elementary school traffic improvements. And we got $2.7 million in new funds for 2016 bonds for the New Smith Farm Middle School. In other restricted funds, we received $318,000 from the Department of Commerce for a plasma games pilot program.
For the Smith Farm Middle School, do we know where that's going? At one point, they said it wasn't going by Smith Farm Elementary. So I'm just trying to figure out, what's the 2.7 million for?
I think Colon is on the phone if he could answer that question for us. Oh, I thought I saw Colon. Colon, can you answer the question about Smith Farm? Maybe he's not listening. We'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'll ask Colon. All right. And then we have another budget amendment for local funds. We have a few budget amendments, I'm sorry, budget transfers. We transferred some, schools transferred some money from some of their supply accounts to other supply accounts and purchase services and for a net, like $12,000 is not a lot. And then we had a transfer from media services supplies for professional development of $1,856. And I believe that is if at the budget amendments.
Are there any further questions about it? We can move on to finish the, we are still starting to finish, but continue work on the compensation project?
So, good evening, Board Members, Board Chair Woodbury and Superintendent McManus. And I'm here with Good News Again to share with you about, this time, a very different group. It's our occupational and physical therapists that provide an essential service to the district. And I'll go through and share. So as a reminder, our committee goal is to use data and research to advocate, to support the school district, to meet the district's mission and vision by implementing competitive compensation, that's really important for this particular one, in order to recruit and retain the best employees. We have three different committees as a reminder, an executive, an internal, and district team that helps and works on this project. And again, this work is comprised of, but not limited to, using compensation study, other research, and market data to properly align these salaries for the various job groups. We also review all employees for experience and making necessary adjustments. And then finally, we make the adjustments based on the market. And this is a multi-year plan, so again, this is the beginning. So as you know, the initial reviews that we've done so far is we started with bus drivers. We then went on to teacher assistants and child nutrition, and then custodian. And all of those were, increases were approved. And so our next group, which is today, is occupational and physical therapists. So we currently have 20 occupational and physical therapists, 13 OTs or occupational therapists, and seven PTs or physical therapists. And nine out of 20 of them have 24 years or more experience in the field. So we have highly experienced, highly skilled people working in these areas. Our goal is to, one, evaluate the continued eligibility for educational supplements based on changes in the licensing board requirements, which I'm going to share with you. We also want to align OTs and PT salary schedules with audiologists, psychologists, and speech pathologists because they have very similar education requirements and we've seen similar-sized districts do the same. We also want to create a competitive salary schedule based on the years of experience for OTs and PTs and especially be competitive for our incoming hires for OTs and PTs. So starting with physical therapists, there's been some education requirement changes over the years. The big one was in 2018. The North Carolina Board of Physical Therapy began requiring completion of a doctorate degree prior to sitting for the licensure exam. So anyone who previously passed the exam, though, before 2018, they're able to maintain their certification and continue in their role. And we have many of our people fall into that category. For OTs, there was also an education requirement transition. In 2008, the National Board for Certification in Occupational Therapy began requiring the completion of a master's degree prior to sitting for the licensure exam. And so also, on April 4, 2019, Occupational Therapy Association determined that OTs may enter the profession at the master's or doctorate level. And then finally, similar to PTs, anyone who previously passed the exam before 2019 and maintained their certification, they can continue in the role. And again, we have several people that fall into that category. Our current OTs and PT salaries and how they compare to audiologists, psychologists, and speech pathologists is that we have a minimum of $45,670, a midpoint of about $63,000, and a maximum of $81,000. Now, our minimum is much lower, even though we have a higher midpoint and maximum. You have to be in those roles for a really long time, I'm talking 20, 30 years, to get to some of these higher-level salaries. For audiologists, they're at around $49,000, $61,000, and $72,000. There's also, it's hard to compare these a little bit because in terms of the OTs and PTs, they're not eligible for the local supplement while the audiologists are and it's included in their salaries that's above. And then also, they're eligible for advanced degree supplement for the OTs and PTs while the audiologists and psychologists and speech pathologists are not. And the reason being, they're higher level degrees, it's what you have to do to get these jobs. And that's now what you have to do to get these roles as well for OTs and PTs. So we're looking to actually embed those, that supplement that we were giving for advanced degrees into what these different salary points would be. We also compared current salary schedules to Elance, Burlington, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Cumberland, Guilford, and Wake Counties. And they all are on step scales, which we are not on. You saw the minimum, mid, and max. And that is something that's recommended by DPI. And we also want to be more competitive against these different salaries. So our findings were three main things. NC DPI recommends a salary schedule based on years of experience instead of the salary schedule with that min, midpoint, and max that we're on right now. The top five comparable districts are on step salary schedules as recommended by DPI. And our advanced degree supplement is 2.5% per month. We currently paid six of our 20 OTs that particular monthly supplement. And again, as I'll indicate in this, we're looking to embed that since there's higher requirements now. So this is the actual step schedule that we're proposing and seeking approval. So this is the actual step schedule that we're proposing and seeking approval for. So you can see when we're hiring, it's, you know, we were at forty-five something before, now we're at forty-nine. And then it goes all the way up to the seventy-two for thirty years. So in summary, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, we want to implement the previously shown proposed salary schedule for OTs and PTs because it has an appropriate step based on the years of experience as a licensed practitioner. This action aligns with audiologists, speech pathologists, and psychologists. And we just want to acknowledge that some employees will not receive an increase because they're already above where their step would be based on their years, but we will hold those employees harmless. So the total cost of making that switch over is ninety-four thousand five seventy-three. However, we're also recommending that we eliminate the advanced degree supplements and embed them in those increases because there's new board licensee requirements. So the total cost is going to be around eighty thousand eight sixty-three because of the annual savings from eliminating that advanced degree of about thirteen thousand seven ten. So we know there's still work here in which we'd have to look at the classified and exempt employees and look at how we're going to do future increases based on the state increases for central office employees. But this is the start, and this is the move to get us on the state recommended salary step schedule. Are there any questions? I know that's a lot.
So, just so I have it in my head the right way. So if you start your career in the district, you have zero years of experience, you start at where the zero is, and then, you know, next year, do you go up, or do you, you go up, right?
Next year, you go up.
Okay.
That's why it's called a step.
Yep.
Yes. And now, if you think about it, you have to have, for one of them, a doctorate degree.
Right, right.
Starting at forty-five. We're trying to get it up to forty-nine, all those years of experience, and then the other one, a master's degree, so.
Elizabeth Mottzinger has a question.
Just a comment. I have served as a board member along with Ms. Jones on this committee, and I would just have to give a great big shout out to Javelin, to Pat, to all the incredible people who have really worked hard on trying to address these issues for our staff. And I just have to say, thank you. We are so lucky to have people who are really committed to trying to do the right thing for our employees, and I appreciate it very much.
Right, I, I would, thank you for saying that, Ms. Mottzinger. I agree, and I think the amount of work that they've done, you know, in, in a relatively short amount of time, has, has been tremendous. So there's, I can assure you, there's a lot of deep, 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 deep dive that they have, that they have done in this to make sure that we're doing the right thing for, for our employees.
Thank you.
I know that in, in the presentation, it said that you all are kind of still researching and looking at the, you know, the groups that are going to come up, but can you, do you already have an idea of what, of what those groups might be? Just so I can, you know, just to keep it in the back of my head.
Well, this is one of the last main groups that we're going to do before the, the fiscal year ends this year.
Right.
We may be able to get another one in, as, as they indicated, it is a lot of research going into these. And we are working with that employee committee to prioritize the next groups that we bring in. But likely, it's going to be the, the secretaries or admin group, which is a big group and a very diverse group. That's going to take us a lot of time to be able to come up with some recommendations there. But again, we're still meeting with that employee group to get through and, and also get recommendations of the different types of groups we should bring forth. We are, good point, Ms. Gillis just mentioned. We also, we kind of put a pause a little bit, even though we're still doing the research, because we're interested to know what the state's going to do about, you know, for some of our roles that may get a fifteen dollar minimum. So we, we want to kind of see if something happens there, but we're not going to stop the work. We're going to keep moving, just as we, we kind of known, it's been floating around for a while. But as you see, we still brought some other groups to you for approval. But that is, the closer we get and the more people are talking about that, that's definitely something we're looking at. Okay? Well, the, the next step is we're going to take this for approval at the next board meeting, and we're going to keep our research going so that we can bring other employee groups to you. Okay?
Thank you so much. We have two action items. I know there was a concern by Leah Crowley about one of the budget amendments. Would you like to go forward or away from more information?
I'm fine going forward.
I, I think Colon is on the line now. He couldn't unmute himself, he said before, but he is, he is on the line, and he can answer your question about Smith Farm. Uh, Colon, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me now? I was having a hard time getting unmuted earlier because technical problems. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yeah, so the two point seven million on the Smith Farm is the amount of money that we asked the county commissioners that would be spent in phase three of their funding, which basically is March of two thousand twenty-one through March of two thousand twenty-three. So we don't, that was just the amount of money that we'll spend on architecture fees and probably some site development stuff as we get ready. Uh, we don't have, as you know, an architect in place, but this is the money we would spend in phase three from the funding from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So do we have a proposal for the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
The, the second?
Yes, Alex gave a second.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, the second part is the compensation project. Do we have a proposal?
Moved to approve. That's Elizabeth.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Alex, I think second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Do we get all the votes counted? Dionne? Because I can't see you, Dionne.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll head on to buildings and grounds.
Thank you, Board Member Bramer. We have six items up for discussion, and first, we will recognize Barry Mottzinger and discuss moving up the HVAC unit and controls for Lewisville Elementary School from the twenty twenty-two to two thousand twenty-one cycle.
Good evening. In the two thousand sixteen bond, there were several projects for maintenance and capital. There were several for Lewisville Elementary, which basically renovated the entire school. They were all scheduled for two thousand twenty-two. We're trying to do this, these renovations over a summer, uh, which is impossible to do everything, so we've kind of split it into sec, segments. Last summer, we did the ERV and replaced all the windows in the school, which were also scheduled for two thousand twenty-two. So this time, we want to just move up the HVAC replacement for this coming summer. The county has provided us the funding, and so, you know, we're ready to go. I've got an engineer working on it now. And so, basically, we'd be able to do it during the summer break and not have to mess with any kind of construction going on during, while the kids are there.
Any questions for Mr. Mottzinger?
Pretty simple one.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, Darrell Walker will discuss a gr, a fuel agreement that maybe we can enter into with the county.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, for the opportunity to come. This is really just informational only. You may, you may recall, I mentioned the county selling the Lansing Lot Facility, that includes our bus lot and our maintenance facility. Uh, that is, that is moving forward. Uh, we have agreed with the county on a fueling agreement. We'll be fueling a lot of our vehicles down at the county lot that's on Liberty Street and working together with their systems, kind of coincide with what we have already, works out really well. We did agree to a two percent markup on the fuel, just because there's the handling fees, and it's going to be a lot of volume, and then up to a seventy-five hundred dollar expense, just in case somebody pulls a hose out of a, out of, out of a fuel tank or something happens, right? Trailer bumps into something or a truck. That was actually a lot more. We negotiated it down to two percent and seventy-five hundred dollar from a capital perspective. So we're all in agreement on the operational side. Works out well. It was presented to the commissioners last, last week, and is the first, uh, first discussion item, and so far, everybody's in agreement to move forward. So I just want to make sure you were informed tonight that further conversations will start taking place with the commissioners and the county. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, next, Jonathan Wilson, our security director, will discuss the high school camera phase one.
Good evening, Committee Chair Jones, Board, and Ms. McManus. If you remember on, I'm going to switch this. If you remember on January twenty-sixth, this board approved plans and awarded a contract for the high school phase one camera project for seven high schools. If you recall, those schools were Carter, Carver, Kennedy, Main Street, Mount Tabor, Parkland, and Reynolds. Since awarding that contract to KNC, Parkland, Carter, Main Street, and Mount Tabor are a hundred percent complete with the exception of one camera, uh, complete on their installation, and programming on those cameras into, into the milestone system is ongoing and should be completed very soon. Carver is seventy, as of today, was seventy-five percent complete, and Reynolds will soon begin. We put Reynolds intensely last because of the scope of the work that, that is at Reynolds, so we didn't slow the other projects down. But at the end, that'll begin soon. Also, since that approval, Kennedy renovation was approved and is now scheduled to begin in the summer. So with, with that said, it makes no sense to install cameras at Kennedy and then immediately take them right back down. Although we could do that, it's just putting wiring in and taking the wiring right back out. So we, we would like to switch the Kennedy project to Winston-Salem Prep. Winston-Salem Prep is similar in size in regards to the camera coverage that's needed. It's in close proximity to Kennedy and would actually reduce the cost of phase one by ten thousand dollars. The Kennedy project, I think, was sixty, well, is sixty-eight thousand dollars, and the Winston-Salem Prep project would be just over fifty-eight thousand dollars. So that would be money that could be used later on, in later projects. Uh, Kennedy would then be pushed back to a later date. I would say we put it in phase two, but my plan is to bring phase two, phase two to you pretty soon. So I'm not sure we could do it then. It would probably be placed in with the middle schools and just put into a, a project at that time. And also, but I would say that the Kennedy project would likely come in much cheaper than originally proposed because when they renovate the building, the, the, the wiring will be placed in at the time that they're doing the construction. KNC, uh, who's awarded the contract and is moving quickly to get them installed, it has been very understanding. They're willing to modify the contract to replace Kennedy with the Winston-Salem Prep project, and this keeps our projects moving forward as we, as we move to upgrade the camera system across the district. We just want to give you a real quick update and let you know where we are with the phase one project. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, next, Justin Dyson, talk about a high school mowing contract or direction to maybe look for a contract?
Yes, so, uh, I come to you this afternoon just kind of asking for some help with our maintenance division grounds department specifically. I give you a brief history and kind of an understanding of what we accomplished in the grounds department. It's more than just mowing, and since nineteen ninety-two, our grounds department's personnel has not increased. It's, it was at twenty-nine in nineteen ninety-two, and we had eight hundred acres that we mowed. And now in two thousand twenty-one, we're at thirty personnel in that department, and we have fourteen hundred acres to maintain. And, and that's just the, the grass that we mow, not necessarily the mulch beds and, and all the additional tasks that occur within that department, such as playground maintenance, playground resurfacing, track maintenance, shrub trimming, tree, tree trimming, so on and so forth, uh, snow removal. That's one of the big ticket items. So as I, as I go into talking about this briefly, um, when I ask for contract, I want to ensure that we understand that I'm not looking to reduce any positions within, within my department. There are some significant advantages to keeping an in-house department for, for grounds because of all the other benefits that come with that. If we, if we talk about snow removal alone, if we have a six-inch snow and we have a contractor to come in to remove that, we're looking at three quarters of a million dollars for our district. So it's, uh, we need to keep that staff on, but what we're looking for is a little help. Because like I said, we, eight hundred acres to fourteen hundred acres, and what has happened is we have slowly declined. You can advance these slides if you'd like. Okay. So, the PowerPoint's really irrelevant, but, um, so mowing, mowing alone really accounts for about sixteen thousand of those, of those wrench turning hours, as we call them. That's, that's, that does not include driving time to and from sites, um, any of those things. It simply accounts for time they are on the job actually performing task, and sixteen thousand of those hours of those thirty thousand people is just for mowing. High schools alone account for four thousand of those hours. You know, those are huge sites. We don't necessarily maintain all the athletic fields, the stadium fields. We do maintain some of the other practice fields and stuff. Some, it kind of varies throughout the district. But with, with mowing, with mowing acreage nearly doubling, what it's brought us to is a slow decline to a point where we're not able to offer the service that we feel is necessary to provide a good environment for our staff and students. Over this past year, we were at over a fifteen-day mowing cycle. When you think about your own lawn at your house, if you waited fifteen days to mow your lawn at your house, uh, you know, the homeowner association would be kicking you out, right? So, um, we're, we're wanting to, to reduce that back down to a good service offering of around ten days, which is, is feasible. We can't mow every four days like we'd love to at our homes, but ten days is a reasonable number that, that we're shooting for. And by doing all the calculations, what we have found is that it would, um, it would take an additional, we run four mowing crews during the summertime, and, and those crews, it would take an additional crew. We would have to put on another whole crew of five people, which would be a crew leader and four technicians on that crew. In addition to all the capital expenses, you have to have three or four mowers and the, and the, the string trimmers and the, um, blowers and the trailers and the trucks and all those things. And what we, what we come to find is that, that is near, that's, that's close to a half a million dollar expense, I mean, when we put all that together. And what, we did some investigation with some, with some contractors around and went out and looked at some sites, and we kind of settled on those high school sites because those are the most challenging for us. We have to hit those really early in the mornings because we all know that high schools never stop. Athletic events and everything else, there are people there till midnight every single night, and they're there early for early tutoring and maybe morning workouts and all those things. So those sites become really challenging for us. And the cool thing about contractors is a lot of those have help that work other full-time jobs, and they, they do a lot of work on the weekends. So having that ability to, to be able to, to go to the weekends for that, for that work is, is advantageous for us. So we kind of settled on those. Those are big challenging sites. And through the conversations with our contractors, it was kind of settled that we, we thought we would be in that range of three to three hundred fifty thousand dollars to contract twelve high school campuses. And so what we've done at this point is we have, we have put out an, an RFP for this, not RFP, we, we've put out a bid package for this, and we've had a pre-bid meeting. We advertised this on the Hub website and IPS website, and then we had a pre-bid meeting. And I'm coming to you tonight with an estimation because my bid opening is on the twelfth, just prior to the next board meeting, but it's after tonight. So I'm, I'm kind of going with a not to exceed number because I need to start this contract April first, if it, if we're going to make this successful, because we know grass starts growing by then, right? So we can't wait till May to start a contract like this. So our, our bid opening is, is on the, on the twelfth, and we're, we're looking forward to hopefully our, our bids coming in at a reasonable number. We are planning this year, we have had, um, six vacancies within the grounds division, basically all year. Another reason why we're not looking to add another crew, it's a struggle to, to hire people. So if we just add more positions, we add to the struggle to hire more qualified candidates. So we are, um, we're hoping to, we're hoping to open those bids at three hundred fifty thousand or below, and we're asking for your help to, um, use, what we're going to do is those six vacant positions, we're using those lap salaries that's been open for a period of time. We have well over three hundred thousand dollars worth of salary savings for this past year due to various vacancies within the maintenance division. So we're going to fund this initially with those salary savings, and then we're placing it in the budget during our budget. it in the budget during our budget cycle now for the 2021-2022 budget cycle. And, you know, depending on what the contract is, we'll make that line item appropriate for that. But as of now, we're going to be, we're going to use the lapped salaries. So, we're asking for your approval for that to continue with that process. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our last two, does someone have a question?
This is Ms. Mottzinger, just a comment. And first, of course, I agree that you've got a problem that we need to solve right now, and so, let's solve it. But I really hope that people were noticing why Forest Versailles is going to be so incredibly important for our district. When we talk about mowing 1,400 acres, that is not a very sustainable process, and I'm hoping that we will get serious this year about using curriculum and our students in operations to really making our schoolyards greener and more sustainable. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mottzinger.
Chairwoman Jones, I'm sorry, I did have one question. So, I wondered, so the amount of the contract being so large, I wondered if there were some conversations about the sort of potential, because when you, I think there may be some smaller firms, some minority-owned firms, that may not be able to bid on a project that large, but would maybe be able to do like a piece of it? Or like, did you have conversations about like the sort of efficacy of like bidding it out in pieces as opposed to one big?
Yeah, so, actually, I forgot to touch on that. So, the way we put out the bid was for four different zones of three sites each. And we did that just from a management's perspective. If we were managing 12 different contractors, it would be an absolute nightmare. But with this scenario, we could possibly have one contractor to come in and lowbid the entire package. They can, we have written that in a way that they can get one, two, three, or all four zones, one contractor. But we could have up to four, and that would reduce the number of acreage. I have to say, some of the acreage that we're talking about, some of these sites take eight hours for a four-man crew to maintain. So, it is a big project for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question, Board Member Bohannon. That was good. Thank you again. So, we have our last two discussion items. I believe Colin Moore will lead us through the discussion around a construction easement on Sullivan Town Road, and then to give us an update on the Wiley sinkhole.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ms. Colin Jones. We, you've got a map in front of you. This was not originally in your package. I put that in this afternoon. I got this from the City County Utilities Commission, which kind of better shows you where this easement request is. They have a sewer line that's running across our Walker Town property, and they need to replace that line. It does involve an upgrade, so they'll basically be installing a new sewer line beside the existing line that runs through that property. So, they just need an additional probably 10 to 15 feet on each side. So, that's what that easement request is for, and they have offered us a compensation for that as well.
Any questions?
Any questions on that?
Okay, Colin, I think you can move on to the next item.
Yeah, so, update on Wiley. I had put some information in your packages that we have finished our, the city had some items they needed to do with approval of the drawings. There was a small piece of the pipe that is on the city roadway, so we accommodated some needs, some questions they had. We reached agreement with them about a week and a half ago, and we've got the materials ordered. We've got them scheduled to start work March 29th. They'll do about a week's worth of work, and then we'll have about a one- to two-day shutdown Northwest Boulevard. So, we scheduled it for the 29th to coincide with spring break week. So, they'll have about two to three weeks, three to four weeks or so after that shutdown to wrap everything up complete. But by the end of April, we should have a complete new, the paved and sinkhole repaired parking lot at Wiley.
Colin, while we have you on the line, can I ask you if we have any kind of schedule for securing property for New Brunson?
Yes, we, yes, ma'am. We have compiled some information and plan to present that in some form, possibly at the next board meeting, but we anticipate bringing some information to you in the April work session.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, more questions for Colin? All right. Thank you, Colin, for the updates. We appreciate it. So, that concludes our discussion items, and we have three action items this evening. The first would be to consider the approval of the permanent construction easement for 5240 Sullivan Town Road. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan, second?
Second.
Thank you. Do, hold on, Ms. Crowley, I don't think you're on this committee, right?
Second.
Are you on?
Oh, no, I'm not.
No, okay. So, a second for Ms. Parker. Sorry, I should have read the names. We get confused. Okay, so, I have a motion by Ms. Kaplan and a second by Ms. Parker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And let me read, so, the board, the meeting, the board members for the Building and Grounds Committee, myself, Ms. Lyda Calvert-Hayes, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon. All right. So, our next action item, please consider approval of the replacement of the HVAC unit and controls for Louisville Elementary School to move that from 2022 to 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And our last action item is to consider the approval of initiating the mowing contracts not to exceed $350,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon, second?
Second.
Ms. Parker, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That concludes the business for the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and I will turn it over to Ms. Mottzinger, who chairs our Policy Committee.
So, this is our last committee meeting. We have on the agenda one discussion item, one action item, and a request for another addition to the full board meeting. So, the discussion item is from Ms. McMillan, who is the Executive Director of Equity Access and Acceleration. Ms. McMillan.
Okay, let me get this straight. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Chair Mottzinger. I'm bringing to you Policy 2112, which is the superintendent's report. If you remember when I gave the equity report update, I mentioned this policy for consideration of revision. This policy was last visited in 2003. I apologize for the, I think, I guess I get some background here. But because the goal of the policy is really to provide information, really the state of the district to the board and the community, I think it warrants to be updated to reflect current work that is happening in the district. And so, what has happened, you'll see the strike-throughs of where language was eliminated, and you'll also see the addition of information, of language to be reflected if the policy is approved. So, I'm just going to highlight a few things in each section. So, if we notice in Section 1, which is the introduction, it pretty much says the same, it's just the language is kind of updated, really, but still gets at the exact same point of having a robust report brought to the board at least once a year, but at the request of the board, it can happen more frequently. Subsection 2 under here lists many of the items that were original in the original policy, the policy that was last updated in 2003. However, there are some additions or just some revisions to the language. So, for example, if you look at letter C, where it says the list of honors and awards earned, the language has changed to a list of district achievements and accomplishments. But there are additions like letter D, which talks about district demographics so that we have a breakdown of that information and including the information on student achievement from the previous year and to ensure that it is disaggregated by race, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. Last but not least in that section, letter H was also included to provide information regarding the development of the district's strategic plan. We know that is updated every, it's a cycle of five years, which our current strategic plan is five years. However, we have some bold goals that are set and metrics within that, and we're working towards that annually, so to include that information as well. Last but not least, Section 3, the equity report. So, initially, equity reports was done from late 1990s to the early 2000s, and to my recollection, there have not been equity reports provided to the board since the one that I did a couple of weeks ago. So, the language in here just basically would update it to align to the equity policy that was passed January 2020. And because we have equity embedded through each of the five goals, Section 3 would reflect a report being brought to the board that reflects the goals, those five goals, and the five pillars that we have outlined in the equity policy. And so, these are the considerations for changes for Policy 2112. Are there any questions or suggestions before we take action to pose for public comment?
I obviously can't see you all, so I'm assuming there are no questions right now?
That's correct. There are no questions.
Okay, okay. So, Policy Committee is made up of myself, Andrea Braemer, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon. Do I have a motion to approve policy change?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? So, that motion passes. The request I had was for us to discuss at the full board meeting to change our policy about what time we start our committee meetings. So, I'm going to request that that be put on the agenda for the policy for our full board meeting. And if, are there any objections to adding that?
What time are we looking to change it to?
I think we were going to have a discussion about it, but because it is not an agenda item, I'm not sure if we're allowed to discuss it right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Mottzinger, if you'd like to discuss, you could amend the agenda to add it as a discussion item, but I believe, Ms. Braemer, to answer your question, there's been some discussion about moving it to 5:30, which is the same start time of your regularly-scheduled board meetings.
Thank you very much.
So, that concludes Policy Committee meeting, and I believe we go now back to the chair for some discussion items on new business.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Mottzinger. So, under new business, we have a discussion item that's broken into two parts and an action item that's, we have two action items and maybe two discussion items. So, the first discussion item is the leasing contracts for the use of athletics fields by Mr. Darrell Walker, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to thank Deion too and her staff for working on these contracts. These are opportunities for us to kind of bring our kids back on campus to, again, their youth sports programs back up and running. And what you have before you tonight is, I think, five leasing contracts. I do just want to make note of item D and E. They are five-year contracts where the others are older, and that is because they've made some investments in the property, and they had to borrow some money to do those projects, and the banks required a five-year contract versus a one- to three-year contract. So, I just want to make sure I was clear with that in that conversation, so.
I just had a, just a couple of things. One, I know, well, so, I'm glad that, you know, we're able to partner with these organizations to, you know, keep our kids active. But I know one of the feedback that I've heard from principals who have some organizations that use their fields sometimes is the amount of maybe debris and trash or things that are left. So, have we, how can we, you know, how do we remedy that? And that's not kind of dumped on the custodial staff and the principal at the school come Monday morning when they walk back in the door? And then also, I noticed that some, I think the language in the contract says that security would be required if it were directed by the principal or by yourself. Should, I know there's been some times when we've had, you know, had some security issues. Is that something that we should make a little bit more mandatory or what? Those are just two things that I know have been, you know, issues that have popped up during my time on the board.
So, I'll take question number one. We are operational staff planning on meeting with all the organizations that lease our properties, including churches and other organizations outside of just the youth programs this summer to kind of go over some guidelines and rules. And part of that will be, we have had some problems with trash, with grilling out, leaving stuff, and quite honestly, we sent them all letters about two years ago about this. And so, our plan is, we've never done a lot of really face-to-face meetings with them. And so, this summer, our plan is before they, because a lot of these are fall sports that are going to roll out, is to meet with them and lay out the guidelines and rules and requirements as we move forward. The security piece is something that I would probably agree that would probably be good for them to have on campus. This kind of, to be honest, we kind of came out of, a few years ago, we actually had an issue on one of our fields where someone pulled a weapon out, and so, we required it at that point because it was a playoff game or something. And so, there were people from outside of this particular area, community, that came in, and so, we have encouraged it, especially with our youth little football programs. That seems to be where most of the issues have come from, quite honestly. They have been providing it. We could make it mandatory as we go forward. I have no problem with that.
I just, I feel like that, I would like to see that as something that's mandatory, and then the other piece, I know how much that, I don't think it happens all the time, but those times where you walk in and the school is just a complete mess, and there's some inappropriate things sometimes that are left out, and you don't want, you know, children to run across those things. Is there a provision where if we, if our staff has to spend their time to clean up, can we then bill them for that to where they have to pay for that? Because, you know, we are already short-staffed when it comes to our custodial staff at our schools, and for them to have to get out there and pick up the trash, to me, is ridiculous.
Yeah, we have actually done that on at least three occasions that I'm aware of, a billback, and I think we can have some strong language as we go forward. I'll work with Deion on that, around that. And we've had it more in one particular area than the other, and we've already told this particular group that it's a zero-tolerant policy moving forward. There's been some other inappropriate things there that we need to handle and take care of, and so, we are all on board with that.
Darrell, is there a way to make sure that the party who's running the field on Saturday is also the party who's put the litter there? So, what I'm saying is like, I've been one of the moms at Clemens Elementary calling that whole campus and picking up trash and then getting a call Monday morning saying there's trash on the campus. You know, so, other groups come in and use those facilities. This one just happens to do it formally and through a rental process.
One of the things we've learned the hard way is that we have to have no trespass and signs up at all of our properties, or law enforcement really can't service us on those issues. But with the improvement of the camera systems as well, as Jonathan?
That's exactly what I was getting at.
We will be able to zero in on that really, really quickly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The next discussion item is the middle and high school updating recommendation by Ms. McManus, our superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury and Board Members. This will be a very short update since I was just up here two weeks ago and gave a lot of information. So, basically, tonight, I told you I would be bringing back, I thought our meeting would be next week, so I actually said on the 16th, but it's tonight. I told you I would bring you back numbers from the four middle schools that were still in four cohorts, and also from high schools, and make a recommendation about high schools. So, first of all, I just had to start with a celebration about the vaccinations. About 4,000 employees were vaccinated in our clinics. We had our last clinic. We had our last clinic yesterday that was district-run. And for every single employee that wanted the vaccine, they were able to get the vaccine. Some chose to go to other locations, but as far as the ones that we hosted with the Health Department, thank you so much to the Health Department and other entities that helped us. But now, anybody that did not take advantage of all those clinics, they still can get them on their own. Hopefully, everyone did. I actually said I was, myself, was going to wait till the very last clinic because I wanted to make sure that I went last. So I always believe leaders eat last, and so I waited till the end. And so I went last night at 6 o'clock. So I was very excited about that, and it was so well-run. So I hope that everyone took advantage of that. So with that said, four cohorts at middle school. Just to give you a little bit of data, our area superintendents worked with our principals, and they looked at all their numbers of students that would be returning if you combined cohorts. They also then went in and measured in their classrooms if those cohorts were combined, would the students fit? And so if we took the four cohorts to two at middle schools, and this is the data, and I have Mr. Hall in here if you have really specific, deep questions about this data. But this is what we found in the data. And this was based on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms. At Clemmons, based on the number of students that have returned at Clemmons, the percent of classrooms that would not be able to follow social distancing guidelines would be 14, 21, and 17. We can work with that because though, we can figure out ways to maneuver kids around and figure that out. So Clemmons is one that we could actually move to the two cohorts. If you look at Jefferson, Meadowlark, and Southeast, their numbers of classrooms that would be unable to social distance are just, are very many. And it is partly because of the numbers of kids that have returned when you combine them, and also the class sizes, the actual, the physical class size. Not number of kids, but the actual, you know, perimeter of the room and how much space when you distance the students. I was on a superintendent call this morning where I was informed for the first time that it could be, it could come forward, that distancing at 6 through 12 could be addressed in the toolkit down the road. It could be soon. At that time, we could make a move on Jefferson, Meadowlark, and Southeast. But at this time, I hated to do this. Trust me, we looked at it in every way possible. But to take those to two, we would not be able to actually meet the distancing guidelines that are required in the toolkit. So at this time, the last, the recommendation that was voted and approved was that the middle schools, that we would move them on the 15th, which is next Tuesday, that was approved, next Monday, for those that could actually make the numbers work. And so that would be Clemmons, okay? Then we go to the four cohort high schools. After a deep analysis of all the other ones that are not here are already in two cohorts. And we actually took the two cohorts to see if they could go to one. So we did the same process, and they all, they all had to stay at two. This is a group that were at four. And the good news is, after the deep analysis of the data, the class, same process, all of the schools will be able to move to two. All right, now, with that said, I'm going to tell you what the timeline, what we're recommending for the timeline on that. So I already talked about the top one. We are recommending on April 12th, and I want to tell you why, because I know people are going to think, that's a month away, and I'll give you the rationale. The week of the 22nd, so next week, by the way, all of the students that have opted in, that have IEPs or 504s, will start back. So all of those students will start back next week in 6 through 12, those that are opting into the four-day of instruction. We need to look at that week. We've been asked by our principals, let's see how that week goes next week with numbers. And then the week after that is actually, oh, also that, the week of the 22nd, many of our teachers are getting their second vaccines. And I'm going to tell you from what I'm understanding, we have over 600 people that will be getting their second vaccine that week, the 22nd, 23rd, 24th. What we are being told and what people are experiencing is illness on the second vaccine. A lot of people are experiencing illness. So our principals felt staffing could be an issue, bringing back everybody into two. And to be honest with you, the next week is two days off, Thursday and Friday, and the next week is spring break. And those are, that was the rationale for, let's just start this with the two cohorts on the 12th. And now you've got eight solid weeks with no interruptions, with no R-days or whatever else. And so that was the rationale for starting on the 12th. So that would be my recommendation. The March 15th was already decided on at the last board meeting. So really, the recommendation is to approve reducing cohorts at every high school to two, starting April 12th.
No, I mean, I think, I mean, I would, would I like to see that sooner than April 12? Yes, but your rationale is, it makes sense. It's using good common sense to say there's no reason to come back. We certainly don't need to come back when teachers are receiving their second vaccination. And we know that that does seem to cause illness. And then to come back for two when we're already going to be gone. So, you know, I thank you for, and all of your staff are really looking at that. And I wish that we could bring those three middle schools, you know, back. But I understand that evidently, you know, we built smaller classrooms at those times when those schools were constructed, so.
Well, if the toolkit changes, I will be back up here as soon as that happens. And, but yes, thank you. I think Board Member Mottzinger and Board Member Braemer.
I think Ms. Braemer had her hand up first.
Okay, Ms. Braemer, Board Member Braemer.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was having a problem with my button. Thank you very much for doing this because it was a concern of mine with distancing and how it was going to work. And the fact that we put forth the effort and tried shows that at least we are showing that level of concern for our staff and the students as well. So I do appreciate it and wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Braemer. Board Member Mottzinger. I don't, I think I'm doing your, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm calling, I'm calling on you all, and I realize I'm probably doing the board chair's, the chair's job.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said, Trish, once a teacher, always a teacher.
You're right.
So I just wanted to thank you, the school nurses, our COVID people, Wake Forest Baptist Health, Novant Health, the Health Department, for an incredible, incredible gathering together of making this possible for our staff. It is really unbelievable, and I have friends all over the country. And almost nobody is covering their staff as quickly and comprehensively as this district had. And I just have to commend both our district people, Jennifer Corso, all. I mean, I, you know, I met the school nurses there. It was incredible. And thank you so much to our community partners and to the district.
Yes, thank you so much.
So we have the two action items. Is there a motion to consider approval of leasing the contracts for the use of athletics fields?
Move approval.
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Jones, second by Board Member Bohannon. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Board Member Braemer and Mottzinger, if you could raise your hand if you agree. Okay, thank you. It looks like that's unanimous, Ms. Jenkins. And then the second action is to consider approval of the high school update and recommendation.
Move approval.
Second.
So it's been moved by Board Member Bohannon. And who did the second? Okay, Board Member Jones, second. Any further question or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Can we not shout?
Holla, look, you, thank you, right. Any opposed? I think that was also unanimous, Ms. Jenkins. Now we will move to our announcements. The first announcement is March is National Women's History Month. Yesterday was actually International Women's Day. Women's History Month is an opportunity to highlight the contribution of women to events in history and contemporary society. I would like to say Happy Women's History Month to all of the women on the Board of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. And we definitely have all of the love and aspiration for our new Board Member, Mr. Bohannon. And I know he can feel the love up here with all these great women. The next announcement we have is March 3rd through the 11th is the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Spring Arts Extravaganza. You will need to make an appointment to view the art in person or view the art online using the links that I believe were attached in our online agenda. Tuesday, March 16th at 5:30 is the Choice Committee meeting, which is, I believe, will be held here in our auditorium. And also, a link will be provided to join online. Thursday, March 18th, it says 5:00 p.m., but I think we need to clarify, the multicultural advisory board is at 5:00 or 5:30. I thought all of the committee meetings were at 5:30. So if we can get some clarity around that, that would be helpful. These meetings are also recorded and available through the Social Studies Department page on our website. Tuesday, March 23rd at 5:30 is, of course, our regular Board of Education meeting. And then lastly, we would be remiss if we did not recognize that March 7th to the 13th is our Schools Social Work Week. And this year's theme for schools' social workers is lighting the way. In their roles, schools' social workers are able to light the way, emphasizing the whole child, collaborating with other professionals, linking students and parents with needed services, and of course, advocating for their profession. Of course, we have tonight in the audience representing all of our fabulous schools' social workers, Ms. Rhonda May. And so we thank our schools' social workers for what they do. At this time, we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter.
So moved.
Second.
Then no question or discussion, let it be known by aye for consensus. Aye, thank you.